Hello.
Hi, how you doing?
I'm good, how about you?
Good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Two minutes until we formally call this meeting to order. Just want to remind those for a housekeeping item that once the meeting begins, please just use the side doors to enter and exit. You can feel free to exit and enter during the course of the meeting, but when there's somebody speaking in particular, it can be very jarring or throw them off or the audience at home or here in the chambers this evening. So please just use both side doors to enter and exit during the course of this evening's meeting. Yes, we legally require all phones to be at maximum volume. No vibration is legally permitted in the premises. It's in the city charter.
She's probably going to be making an announcement from elected official.
I've kept them.
This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order for 2:22:22. It's an honor to be with you this evening. We now bring to the podium our invited guest this evening to deliver the invocation. It is the Reverend Dr. John D. Tolbert of the historic Trinity Missionary Baptist Church, long-running faith institution in the city of Pontiac. And Reverend Dr. Tolbert has been leading that congregation for over 10 years. He is a very learned academic, but also a community-focused man with a career history and education background in social work as well, in addition to divinity studies. Please, to deliver the invocation this evening, we give our attention to the Reverend Dr. John Tolbert.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, council. Let's pray together. Eternal grace of God our Father, we thank you for your kindness. We thank you for your grace and your mercy and for giving us another day, another opportunity, to get it right with you and to get it right with each other. We thank you for the city of Pontiac. We thank you for how you have blessed us already in 2022, and we pray now, God, that you would continue to lead and guide, give us wisdom, give us guidance, give us direction. We pray, Lord God, that you would allow this phoenix to rise and that you would take all of the glory for yourself, but let blessings fall where you may. Make your presence known, guide, and let there be a spirit of peace even in our discussions this evening, both here in the chambers and in our conversations throughout the city and at home. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please rise now. We are going to have a moment of silence as well as followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I'm going to read names that our community has lost in recent days, but please also reflect for those that in your neighborhoods, in your families, and that you know have departed with us recently. We have the aunt of Councilman William A. Carrington has passed away, and we continue our condolences to Councilman William Parker, Jr. on the passing of his beloved mother-in-law. Our community has also lost Leida Claudio, Octavia Tatey-Flewellen, Louise Hammond, Charles Kendrick, Jr., Dion Rhimes, Pablo Rodriguez, Elvin Steed, Kim Andre, often went by Dre Young, and Troy Jones, who lost his life. He was murdered this last weekend at Luther and Franklin, so just 49 years old. Please, let's now observe a moment of silence for those we have named and those that are Thank you very much. Let us now do the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Present.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Quorum being established. Is there a motion to excuse President Pro Tem Carrington for personal reasons?
No move.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman. No discussion on that motion. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Aye.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Ficciates, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I make the motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Support Nicholson.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. That motion now before us. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any motions, questions, amendments?
I'd like to add to the agenda.
Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
I would to add to the agenda and update on the status of SMARTS status as an op-ed in community as a voice to say it.
Okay, since we don't have a resolution ordinance with it, I will do it as a discussion, a discussion item. So there's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Councilman Rutherford that we add a discussion item regarding SMART transportation system, specifically Auburn Hills' recent decision. So that will be a discussion item that will come after agenda address, but before that first ordinance item. Any discussion clarification needed. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on that motion to amend the agenda. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Ficciates, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda before us is now amended accordingly. Are there any other motions to amend? Hearing no other motions to amend, we now have the main motion before us, approval of the agenda as amended. Hearing no further discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Ficciates, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we approve this evening's consent agenda, not a debate of bold motion. We now proceed to roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Ficciates, no nays.
That motion carries. We're now at special presentations. We have two this evening. The first is focusing on the nonprofit organization in the city of Pontiac by the name of Foxhole. And last week, we had the first consideration about a resolution authorizing this nonprofit as a recognized nonprofit organization in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. And council members wanted to be able to hear from the nonprofit about the nature of their work and what's been sort of the work they've been doing so far. So we know that the applicant and the representative from the organization had been with us last week, but hadn't been with the meeting at that time. So we're grateful that Modesto de la O is with us currently. If you could please approach the podium, sir. Long story short, tell us about Foxhole and the good work that you have been doing and hope to do further.
Thank you. Thanks for the invite. So Foxhole, we started because of, basically, it comes up down, it comes down to the 22-a-day stat. That stat goes up, it actually went up last, last year, the last quarter, but we went up to a little over 30%. So it's about one out of every three vets decided to take their life. Our post here in Pontiac had four, four vets associated with us. One, you may have heard of it, one was actually our post commander, the same person that held my position before I took over. He decided to take his life. There was a Command Sergeant Major of the National Guard here, here in Michigan. He did the same thing. And then there was the, the two, the two brothers, they were twins, served together, and then themselves did that as well. So at that point, we realized that we about had enough of that. You know, we just, it was right there. I had enough. And I myself had made a, started my martial arts journey as well, and I noticed that some things were working. So combined all those things together, as we decided, it's time to do something about it. So our main focus is that we offer martial arts as a, as a healthy outlet, as vets, if there's any vets in here, you'll understand what I mean. There's a certain amount of energy, a certain amount of things we carry that you need to, you need to unload, and you need to unload in a healthy way. So for us, it seems to be martial arts, it seems to work. So those things where you find that, you know, all the benefits, like the healthy, the healthy stuff, kind of like the benefits of working out, the camaraderie, especially the camaraderie, the interacting, once we get amongst ourselves and start interacting, nothing but good things tend to happen, because now you're no longer isolated, you're no longer in a house, you're actually out there and doing something and engaging with people that are very like-minded. So that tends to lean to good things as well. So almost three years to the day, we started offering free martial arts to veterans on Sundays. So no hassle, no nothing, just come on in. If you're curious, you could sit off to the side and observe, but most vets actually participate and join in. So we noticed that there was a few types of vets, like they fall into categories. One was the one that may have had mobility issues and is looking to overcome those some way. Otherwise, the health benefits. The other ones did just missing being around like-minded people. That's, that's a big deal. So that's when we, we started noticing that. Some magic actually started happening. Some things like where they thought they were alone, and now they start talking, you start interacting, and it's, it's a very close-knit community, so you're interacting a lot. You're, I mean, you're, I mean, you're right next to each other, training, pushing each other, you know. So, so then that led to something else, and it started leading to the things such as, has anybody here had trouble with the VA? Or how about the GI Bill? Or, you know, things of that nature, like these challenges that you face along the way that you thought you were the only one doing it? Well, here's somebody that's just like you, that went through it and has an answer for you. So I'm happy to say that we either went through it personally, or one of my vets did it, or I know the person to where he's sending you to. I have an answer for you, I have a resource for you, there's help out there. So all those things tend, tend to lead to good things, because now the vet's engaged, they're coming out, they're, they're training, they have a purpose, almost like a purpose again. So that's what it is, the, the way that vets can, can become part of the program is we have to check the DD-214 discharge, we have to look at an essay, how does martial arts help, or how is it going to help you, or what would you like out of it? We also need to see that you're enrolled in the VA. Quite often, we get veterans who need assistance, they need it yesterday, but not because of the process the VA has. Well, it's a timely process, so we need to see that you're taking the step, the necessary steps to get the help, to get the resources that are available to you. Otherwise, you're trying to do it without benefits, you're entitled, so it becomes a challenge at that point. So I'd rather stop talking and just let somebody who is actually was the first recipient of what we were doing speak a little bit. Her name's Marissa Struck, she's an Army Vet. She was our first one, she's a DMT, and she's, she's a go-getter, a good kick out of her.
Please, welcome. Clapping is permitted per Councilwoman.
No pressure. So the three types of veterans that Mo just mentioned, I kind of fell into all three of them at one point or another, and a couple of times, all three at the same time. I moved here with my ex, and I didn't know anybody but him, and we ended up splitting, parting ways, and I was completely alone. So I ended up getting an invite to the VFW for a party and was basically voluntold that I was going to jiu-jitsu the next day, and it kind of became addicting. I had to go back. It was brotherhood, the brothers and sisters that I had been missing since I had gotten hurt and got med boarded out, like they were there again. And so I got hurt in November, and I tend to shut down from about October till the end of December. And when I would previously stay home and isolate and not want to bother people with my terrible mood or being sad, I felt an obligation almost to my new family at jiu-jitsu that I would force myself out of the house on Sundays, even if I didn't do anything else but go to work that week. And, I mean, exercise releases endorphins, and they make you happy, and if nothing else, that hour and a half of sometimes getting my ass handed to me every week was just, I don't know how, but it was what I needed to kind of pull myself together, and my confidence is through the roof now, I'm a manager at a store, and, I mean, it's not all due to Mo and, you know, teaching me how to choke people when I need to, but it's in large part due to that. My confidence is, I, I used to sit in the grocery store parking lot for 20 minutes to like amp myself up to go inside, and now I'm just like throwing my earbuds, wander around the store, and I don't care who's looking or what they have to say about it. I know that if push comes to shove, if I'm walking to my car at night from the mall to, you know, after I get off work, I don't stress or worry about, you know, what's going to happen to me if somebody comes after me, because I can handle it.
And where were, where were the, some of the courses performed, and where would you intend on performing some of the courses in the future?
So the classes are all done at Victorious MMA in Troy. I know we've done a couple of things, like meetings. I think you're probably better off.
Yeah, that's where it all kind of started, but I'm from Pontiac, graduated Central. I got recruited out of Pontiac. My VFW's in Pontiac, so I'm from Pontiac. So that's where, that's where we're at, that's where we're intended to be eventually. For right now, it all kind of stemmed from the home gym, which is in Troy, and that's the Victorious MMA. So we're, we're there, but the other part, I'm glad you asked that, the other part that we're a little bit different. Sometimes a veteran will face something like she said, and they'll start getting isolated again and kind of finding ways not to be around. But we're a little more active, we're a little more, we're focused on outreach. So that's where, place a call, shoot a text, something like, oh, well, you know, some came up, and, you know, like, okay, well, I'll be there, you're sick, I'll be there in five minutes with some chicken soup. We got this. I got mats in my truck, we can roll in your kitchen and we can clear dairy. We got it. Those people then tend to come back, really, because now they, they saw that somebody actually cared enough to look past it, they saw that somebody was there that's been through it. So you know, you have that relatedness that somebody's actually going to take a step forward and come get you, swim out to get you, and bring you right back.
Thank you.
So that's where we're at.
Questions from council members. Councilman Nicholson?
Thank you. Incredible work. It's very moving and so, so necessary. I have some questions as it relates to Pontiac. It sounds like the programming's happening in Troy, you're looking for gaming licenses here. What's the facility? What are you intending to do with that? Can you give us some?
Our, our home is out of Pontiac, it's the address at the VFW. So we're from here. When we submitted the forms, they said that they needed to make sure that the city council knew they were recognized as a nonprofit. So we can't do much additional fundraising without, let's say, auction items, raffle items, run-of-the-mill things like that. So you need to have that to get aligned to then ask, may we please auction this item off? Can we do raffle this item off? So it's a matter of just trying to increase fundraising, you know, that's what runs all nonprofits, so we're just trying to get some of that.
So auctions and raffles, is there any intention for poker, bingo, or any other?
We currently have no experience with that, so I would say no right now, but if we can get it and it works, we will try it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilwoman James?
Well, do you have plans to try to put a program like this in Pontiac? I know we struggle with having availability of places to have programs like this, as we don't have a community center, and we're very limited, but is there plans to try to do something within the city if you have that avail, that opportunity?
Absolutely, ma'am. I would love to be able to give Pontiac, it already has the VA Behavioral Center, the VA Clinic, the 1200 building, it already has, everything has the VFW, the American Legion. I would like to add this next part to it.
Thank you. Councilman Parker?
Certainly, what you're doing is commendable. My question is certainly centered around veterans who are certainly, some are mentally challenged, some have PSD. How are you going to deal with the security as well as possible injuries?
Well, the first part, thanks for asking that, the first part is when they come in, the very first thing we ask is, what, because it tends to happen, what service-connected disabilities do you have? The next part, we have roughly about 20 vets that are currently in that will interact, primarily me in the beginning, interact along with some of the other more advanced martial artists that have communication with that person at all times. Once they're ready, we put them initially through a mobility drill, that's just more of a warm-up to get them to understand what's happening, get their, get used to the mind-body connection there. Slowly, we keep monitoring this. The next part will be the drill of the day, the move of the day. We teach, we teach, we observe, so they have to ask questions, because a lot of people don't know what's happening when they're doing it, so they need to, they're going to, they're going to definitely interact with you. They're going to say what's going on. That way, we're constantly interacting, constantly seeing what's happening. Eventually, once they've come enough and we feel that they're ready, and depending on the rehearing, how they've been acting, they then get to do a live role with, say, myself or one of the more advanced folks, and then we tend to see how it goes from there. So we pay, the first question is, do you have any injuries? Do you have any service-connected disabilities that we need to know about? Because you're going to be in some tight spots here where you could aggravate that injury or something else could happen.
I think I have one more question. In regards to you during your training in Troy, but licensed in Pontiac, is there any litigation issue that might come up regarding that?
No, sir. There, there's none.
As far as you know?
As far as I know, there's, there's none.
The, the nonprofit has filed their paperwork with their, you know, sort of home address at 800 Caesar Chavez Avenue. So the requirement is that sort of your home municipality is the one that sort of grants the charitable gaming license authority, which is why the clerk's office has brought it to the council. If they were a nonprofit that was registered in Waterford but did a lot of work in Pontiac, they would likely, they would be at the Waterford Township Board meeting asking for that approval because they were registered in Waterford. Okay, go ahead and just do it that way. Any other questions? Hearing no further questions, we thank you, sir. And then one of our early items of business is the item that we considered last week, so it's an active motion, we'll be voting on whether we approve. So that'll come shortly, but just not yet. We wanted to make sure that we had just a special presentation, so you didn't have to dip out. Thank you for being here.
Appreciate your time, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second special presentation, we bring to the podium Oakland County Treasurer, Robert Wittenberg, tax foreclosure prevention resources for Pontiac homeowners and other useful updates for the Pontiac community. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. And thank you both for your service and for the work that you're doing with the veterans in our community, in our community. Council members, congratulations, and Mayor Grimal, congratulations to all of you. I was there at the swearing-in, and I'm really excited to work with you and just know that I'm here to help and support however I can and, you know, partner at the county level. So I look forward to working with all of you. Today, I'm here to talk about our work trying to prevent foreclosure in our communities, and specifically here in Pontiac. For those that don't know, the tax cycle is roughly a three-year cycle. Your taxes, your property taxes are due to Pontiac, and this is for all the residents at home and here, your taxes are due to the local community, so here in Pontiac, your first year, and once they become delinquent, they get passed over to the county treasurer's office to collect those taxes. And then there's, in essence, two years from then that you have to make up the, the taxes and pay your taxes, otherwise you are subject to foreclosure. But foreclosure is the last thing that we want to do. We do not want to foreclose on people. It is, it is bad for the, the families that are impacted, it's bad for the neighborhood. So we are out here trying to do whatever we can to try to prevent foreclosure. So I just wanted to come speak about some of the things that we're working on and how we can help. So this is for, again, everyone listening here and at home. So first and foremost is, we want to hear from you. We, we try to get people on repayment schedules, and so we want to work with people, and so they have to reach out to our office, so we know that they're doing everything in their power to try to make up for the taxes that they are delinquent on. So first, I will give out our office phone number, 248-858-0611. Again, 248-858-0611. Or you can go to the website, oakgov.com/treasurer. And so you can go there. The foreclosure deadline for this year is March 31st, so it's coming very soon. And, and this is all state statute, right? This is something that, based on state statute, the timeline that's in place. So that's why that March 31st deadline is coming up. We actually will do one-on-one taxpayer assistance meetings with people. Like I was saying, if you call our office, we will schedule a time, we will talk your, talk through your situation and try to get you into a good place and help you out. Additionally, we have within our office our Financial Empowerment Center, and Rita, who is the person that oversees that department, does, in essence, like a financial coach and kind of help people see if there are grants available to them, help them try to put together a budget. And so encourage anyone to call the phone number there as well, 248-807-5287. Additionally, we have the Accounting Aid Society that are there in the, if anyone's been, and I assume most people have, or maybe not, but to the county complex and in the commissioner's auditorium. They are there on Saturdays from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. At the auditorium, like I said, the Accounting Aid Society helps people file their taxes, and they do it for low-income families free of charge. As well, Lake Shore Legal Aid is another group that we have no affiliation with, but we refer a lot of people over to. Lake Shore Legal Aid is free legal services for seniors and low-income families. They do everything but criminal law, so just FYI. Lake Shore Legal Aid, you can look them up, or you can call 888-783-8190. And then one of the things, one of the main things I really wanted to talk about is, there's a new program that the state has based on funding from ARPA dollars. I see you mouthing it over there. It's a new program called MIHAF, the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund. And it is, there used to be a program, it was called Step Forward. That program ended in 2020, so this is a new program that actually just started on Valentine's Day this year. So it just started. It is for, if it's your principal residence, and you can get up to $25, $25,000, $25 wouldn't go very far, $25,000 towards your mortgage, back taxes, utilities, condo fees, land contract fees. And it is for 2019, for the taxes specifically, 2019 taxes and moving forward. So 19, 20, 21, and even 22 taxes, depending on when you apply. It must be your primary residence, and you must make below 150% of AMI. So just know that. And then you have to write a letter that just proves what your, and it has, it's COVID-related, so there has to be some kind of COVID hardship, where either you lost employment, your spouse lost employment, something with, you know, childcare, there are a lot of different things. My understanding is they're going to be pretty lenient on, on what it is and how people qualify. But I really want to encourage people to look into MIHAF. You can, you can look it up online, or the website is MIHAF, M-I-H-A-F dot Michigan dot gov. You can go there and get some more information, and applications are open right now, so we can start applying right now. So I just want people to be aware of that. One of the other things within our office, we have surplus properties, so those are properties that we are maintaining at the county level within the treasurer's office, and encourage people to look on our website, because there are some vacant lots, and they might be next door to you or near you. And we want people that want to really take care of those lots to, to buy those lots if they're interested. So on our website, we have a map that shows, and we also have applications for people. And it's important for us, again, to have people who are local, who care about the community, who will be the ones to help maintain those, those lots. One other thing, and I'm sorry, I'm going through like a laundry list, but again, you can reach out to us if you have any questions, but just wanted to talk to you about some of the things that we're working on. So the other one is, is those that qualify for the poverty exemption with your property taxes, you reach out to Equalization. Equalization is at the county, but they do the assessing for Pontiac, and you can call them at 248-858-0740. And again, I'm not going to get into all the specifics, but if you have questions, you can call about it. Last thing, just so people are aware of, on March 1st, for people that owe their 2020 taxes, there is a $235 fee that will be added on March 1st, and this is, again, per statute. And this is, again, per statute. So, this is, we have no control over the fees that are added. So, but we want people to know that ahead of time so that hopefully they can get paid up before that date, before that fee is added to their account. So, I think I went over quite a bit. One more time, I'm going to reiterate our phone number and our website so that you can reach out if you need anything, 248-858-0611, and oakgov.com/treasurer. So, I think, tried to cover as much as I could in a shorter period of time. But obviously, I'm open to any questions that any of you have. And then, people at home, please, please reach out to us. We want to help and work together.
Thank you. With questions, Councilman Rutherford and then Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Yeah.
I have a question. Do you have to have an appointment for the tax services for Saturday for the low-income persons? And is there an age requirement?
It's a good question if there's an age requirement. I don't know that answer, but I can find out and let you know. Yes, you do need an appointment. And then, there is the phone number, and I'll give it one more time, 313-556-1920. Or you can look up the Accounting Aid Society is the group. But they are there doing, you know, free tax preparation. So, it's a really good resource for the community, and it's right here in Pontiac as well.
Thank you.
So, thanks for that question.
Councilman Nicholson.
Wanted to put a book out, and thank you, Treasurer, for being very supportive. The treasurer's office and a member from the assessor's office is going to be at P&amp;Q Bakery. I have a coffee hour from 2:00 to 4:00 on Thursday. So, if you're not interested in waiting in lines or making, waiting on hold, which I know is a very short hold, I've called a few times myself, come out, get a free coffee and a donut, ask questions. We'll be there with paperwork and information and ready to answer your questions.
And tell them we're P&amp;Q's.
P&amp;Q Bakery is at 526 North Telegraph Road in the plaza at Telegraph and Elizabeth Lake Road in District 2.
And I will be there, actually personally. So, if anyone wants to come out to say hello or, I don't know, throw an egg at me or something, whatever you want. I'm constituent services, yeah.
Throw a donut.
Yeah, a donut, yeah. I'll take baked goods. I just, I'm not a big chocolate eater, so just FYI. So, if it's not chocolate, I will happily enjoy it.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for being here, Treasurer Wittenberg. It's really a pleasure and honor for us to have you in attendance. And having served with you in the legislature, I know that you're incredibly hardworking, diligent, and care deeply about everyday people and everyday residents. And so, I appreciate you being here. I appreciate your hard work to try to prevent tax foreclosure from happening in the first place. And I think I speak for all of the elected officials in our city when I say we're really excited and looking forward to working with you in our new capacities.
Likewise. Thank you for those kind words. I appreciate it. And I look forward to working with all of you, and I'm really excited about the city of Pontiac. That's for sure. So, and I'm here to help and support however I can and whatever you need.
Other questions or feedback? With that, thank you very much, Treasurer Wittenberg, for being here this evening and for your presentation.
Thank you.
We're now, all right, yeah, feel free to applaud. Recognition of elected officials, I see we have Congresswoman Haley Stevens with us this evening. If you want the podium, you can claim it.
Well, good evening, Congresswoman Haley Stevens, proudly representing Michigan's 11th district. And this by far is the most engaged and well-attended city council meeting in Oakland County. And I'm here because I knew what was happening, and I'm getting ready next week to go back to Washington. We're getting back into session. It's going to be a long month. I think this is the last Tuesday I'm going to be here for several weeks. So, was just very eager to see all of you, to hear what was taking place at city council, and just give you a couple of quick updates about what we're going to be working on in Washington when we get back. You're seeing the headlines of conflict between Russia and Ukraine. We have democracy on the line internationally. We have democracy on the line within our own country. This is why I have been a proud co-sponsor of the John Lewis Voting Rights Bill. This is why I will continue to work on voting rights while I'm in the Congress, and this is why I will continue to stand with people in the Ukraine as they are being invaded by an autocrat. We are also working on President Biden's innovation agenda, right? Investing in our communities, investing in places like Pontiac and in our schools for STEM education, equality and inclusion, dealing with the supply chain disruptions that are really hurting our small businesses all across Oakland County. This is, you know, the chip shortage. This is why used car sale prices are through the darn roof right now. And we have got a plan with the American Competes Act to get this done. This all flows through my committee on the House Science, Space, and Technology Committee in the United States Congress. So, we are working on that. I'm also here to address all of you because it is an election year, and Congresswoman Haley Stevens is running for reelection in a new configuration of the 11th district including Pontiac. And boy, oh, boy, am I fired up and inspired at the opportunity to be able to represent Pontiac in the United States Congress. You have a phenomenal mayor, a phenomenal city council. It's amazing to watch all of you in action. And we have a phenomenal outgoing member of Congress in Brenda Lawrence, who has been a fighter for Pontiac. And she has endorsed my campaign to run for Congress in Michigan's 11th district to win this seat. And this is all about showing up, right? Showing up here today and showing up not just when it's an election year, not just showing up when times are good, but also when times are tough, making it all the way through this pandemic with the resources that we put forward, the need to have paid family leave, and the need to continue to invest and support the economic development that I know our mayor and our city council is working so hard on. And certainly, to support our veterans. You know, this is something that I've worked on very hard in my time in Congress, thousands of cases closed, people with social security disability claims, veterans trying to access their paperwork. So, I really want to salute the nonprofit with a foxhole that's here tonight as well. So, thank you all so much for having me, and I will yield back the rest of my time.
Thank you. Thank you. Other elected officials with us this evening? With that, we are now at Agenda Address. It's a two-minute time limit opportunity for those that wish to speak prior to the council hearing a certain item of city business so that we can do it with your feedback and input. And first up for Agenda Address, we have Megan Schramsky regarding Agenda Items 5 through 8 and 11. You have the floor.
I've been trying to stay away. Honestly, I have. Aren't I good? You should be so proud because I never missed meetings for 25 years. I'm just glad to see the celebration of Oliver Green on the agenda and you honoring Nancy and Don Kalendine, Lori Miller, Portia Fields Anderson, and Larry King. Now, the other thing I wanted to say, it's about Agenda Item Number 11, but it's really about all your boards and commissions. I'm getting a lot of phone calls that no one's being contacted back when they apply. And you really do need to interview all of the candidates before you make a decision. And there was someone very well-qualified that was not interviewed, and that is not the only one. And that is all I have to say. So, please, please be very careful to interview all the candidates. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Pastor Kathy DeZero. You have the floor.
Good evening. While I'm thinking about it, there's a giant pothole on Auburn Road.
Which one?
Between the first light off of Updike coming west on Auburn. I know because I was in it. One of the things that I'm interested in is the mess at the top of the Phoenix Center. That's the first thing people see when they come into this city. We have enough negative press. We really need to get that mess down, clean it up, do something with it. It just looks like bad flags flying.
This is Agenda Address. Is it an item for, that's on the business of this evening's agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. I've got it backwards. Okay, I'll talk later. We'll see you soon.
But we got the pothole. Jose Ibarra, I don't see him presently, but, okay, very good. Yes, sir, you have the floor for Agenda Address.
Yes, I want to address Item 9 and 10. Item 9 was before the previous council and the previous administration. Before you go forward with this, let me ask you this. How many of you know how far the fiber optic from Comcast has made it to this building? Because you can upgrade all that you want, but if it's not coming in at fiber optic, you're not going to get it. But you're going to pay for it. So, let's make sure we're holding Comcast feet to the fire and not bound down to Comcast and actually doing your due diligence in that aspect. Now, Number 10, I see that the Mill Street reconstruction is on here. What checks and balances are being put in to prevent a backflow of the sewer like happened when the interceptor failed a few years ago? The backflowed POH completely, right? Is there any checks and balances on that? Because there has to be something in place where there'd be some type of backflow preventer so that the people in the hospital can continue to do their jobs while people are in need of emergency care. So, don't just sign off on the Mill Street project thinking we're going to get this done. We're talking about infrastructure that has been neglected, 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 just like Flint. Flint was a time bomb waiting to go off. It just didn't happen. It was a thing that was neglected over time. It's the same thing here in Pontiac. Look at the water distribution system. There's places here that you still have transite in the system. So, make sure that you're doing your due diligence when it comes to things like this. And, you know, the county has the, has the water department, has the sewer department. Make them do what they're supposed to do. You do your due diligence and hold on, and don't let go until it's done correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, the final Agenda Address this evening, Robert Bass, regarding the ordinance on the agenda.
Good evening, everyone. I have two areas of concern. I watched the meeting. I wasn't here last week, but I watched the meeting. And the $15,000 cash bond, that concerned me a little bit, as well as the approval for inspector to sign off on additional time during the deadline. I don't have a real problem with it. Mr. Carrington pretty much hit on that aspect of it, but it was not a closed door after the mayor gave his little additions to it. When it comes to inspection, I think if you're going to give that responsibility to an inspector to sign off on a deadline project, then I think the manager should second that opinion because not going back in the past, but personalities get into it when you get to dealing with the public. And some inspectors don't deal with the public properly. So, I think there should be a shut door and somebody to back up his decision on whether it was accurate or not. So, with that, with the $15,000 bond, when it comes to businesses, there's all type of businesses, big business, little business, small business, and then there's us as resident housing and also those that have ownership. I hope those are separated and clarified because as a CDC leader, I would be coming to planning and addressing some of these, and I'd like to know what the policy is for each one. Because when it comes to commercial properties, they're not dealt with the same way that regular businesses are. And with that, thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes Agenda Address. We are now at the discussion item in terms of the SMART Regional Transportation System, specifically Auburn Hills' recent decision to opt out. Councilman Goodman, you had amended the agenda to add this. If you'd like to have the floor first.
Yeah, and I'll, this will probably be like a back-and-forth between the mayor and councilperson Nicholson. Unfortunately, I have to bring you the news that Auburn Hill City Council has voted 5 to 2 to opt out of the SMART bus system. As of right now, there are kind of like conflicting opinions on whether or not SMART will remain in place through the summer or until early 2023. But as of right now, the city of Auburn Hills has voted to opt out of SMART. Those bus lines would include, and very important things to Pontiac residents, including access to greatest crossing, where many people have had jobs, including myself, Oakland Community College, Oakland University, the jobs on Featherstone, Updike, literally anything that's essentially in Auburn Hills or on the border, it will be affected. And unfortunately, despite the efforts of our mayor and two councilpeople and the 25 public comments that were in favor of keeping SMART from 10 different communities, including their own residents, they have voted to opt out. Again, between myself, the mayor, and Councilman Nicholson, we will do our best to keep you updated, hence why I'm bringing this up tonight. That way, everyone is aware of the things that are likely pending and will affect our own residents as it takes to transportation in the region. So, I wanted to bring that up and whether or not either one of my people have something to say.
Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Well, first, I want to echo the concerns expressed by Councilman Goodman about the seriousness of the potential of Auburn Hills withdrawing from the SMART system. It would be, have a very serious negative impact, not just on our residents who rely on SMART to get to jobs, not just on our residents who rely on SMART to get to shopping opportunities in Auburn Hills, but also, for that matter, on businesses themselves who rely on SMART to get employees to work.
Point of order. I'm sorry, Mayor Grimal. If the audience could cease side conversations, the mayor has the floor.
And so, you know, in my view, it's a very short-sighted decision that Auburn Hills has taken that will not just negatively impact our residents in very obvious ways, but is in fact not in Auburn Hills' own best interest. There were a couple of city council people in Auburn Hills who opposed the decision and who spoke, I thought, and very eloquently about the fact that this is not in the best interest of the region, it's not in the best interest of Pontiac, it's not in the best interest of Auburn Hills. And it's a real shame that a majority on the Auburn Hills City Council made the decision that they did. Having said that, I do have some updates since we last spoke last night. A couple of important things. Number one is that everybody now seems to agree that the decision of Auburn Hills will not take effect until January of 2023, no matter what. So, Auburn Hills will remain part of the SMART transportation system, at least through the end of this year. But moreover, apparently, given the timing of Auburn Hills' vote last night, Auburn Hills cannot withdraw from SMART at all unless it receives a 2/3 vote from the Oakland County Transportation Authority. And that seems very unlikely, actually. And so, it looks like Auburn Hills will probably not be able to withdraw from SMART in the foreseeable future. Now, they could potentially revisit that decision next year sometime or beyond. So, I think we still want to make sure that we're trying to work with SMART, trying to make sure that we're reversing the current viewpoints of Auburn Hills City Council people. Because although it looks like they probably won't be able to withdraw this year at all and will have to revisit this decision in future years, the Auburn Hills City Council may in fact try to do so. So, again, I think we want to continue to both keep the pressure up on Auburn Hills, but we want to try to convince them that their decision is not just in a short-sighted decision for our residents and for the region, but it's really not in their own best interest either. So, we'll continue that dialogue with Auburn Hills City Council people and hopefully persuade them to see the light on this issue.
Thank you. And for the community's frame of reference, the city council, about a month ago, maybe a little less, we did unanimously vote and wrote a very diplomatic resolution stressing the benefit and the seriousness for Pontiac residents, but also for Auburn Hills residents that are likewise trying to connect to other regional transportation options. And Pontiac very much is a hub that we want to strengthen even more so in the future. Councilman Nicholson and then Councilman Rutherford.
Something that I think is important to point out is that the narrative at that council meeting was not about particularly the service or even the fact that those residents had voted overwhelmingly, over 70%, all three times that SMART millage had been brought to their voters. It was that they felt that this move would spark a regional conversation. And we've seen other townships and cities try this before, and it didn't spark that conversation. Because of the way that this opt-in, opt-out nature is set up, when a city opts out, it divides that cost, but also the service. Because the way that SMART, and sometimes our voters will come to us especially and have that question when they look at the, who's paying for SMART, they see, wow, Oakland County is paying the lion's share of this, what looks like a regional, not isn't actually, looks like a regional transportation authority. But if you look at the service, it's actually equitably balanced. So, if Oakland County is paying 70% of the service, 70% of the service lines run through Oakland County, and they take great care to do that. So, I think, you know, what was nice to see is that over 25 people, you know, showed up to that meeting, and they did say this was the most well-attended meeting they've ever had, and people spoke on this topic more than...
Don't tell Congresswoman Haley Stevens.
Anyway, yeah, yeah. Sorry you missed out. But it was, it was nice to see, not a single person spoke against it. They were there really saying, please hold on to this. And to see a majority of that representative council vote against the best wishes and over 70% of their voters was just wrenching. It was really bizarre. So, I'm glad to see that we were there, that we sent that resolution, that our county executive... our, our county executive sent a resolution, that Ora Peskowitz, uh, the president of Oakland University, uh, many students were there. We had residents from Pontiac that were saying, I don't have a car, or I can't drive anymore. My disability runs me unable, and I am not a senior, and I'm not disabled, so your next option, your next idea for transportation is not going to meet my needs. Um, and it was blinders and, 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 and closed ears. It was, it was really a lot. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford?
Um, the question is, am I my brother's keeper? Because right now, we don't see the effects of it now, but the next generation will. So I'm employing you all to write to the, uh, Auburn Hill City Council and tell them your concerns as well, because they have to listen to us all, because it does affect us all at the end of the day. And I wanted to applaud you, Councilman Goodman, and also Councilman Nicholson, and also, uh, Mayor Grimaldi for your elegant way of speaking and representing the city of Pontiac well. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Others that wish to speak for a first time? Councilman Goodman, for a second time.
And I will say, just from a personal experience, having gone to that meeting, I, I went there to, to plead with Auburn Hills from not only the perspective of being a councilperson, with, uh, a good portion of the bus line that I speak of being in my district and shared with, uh, Councilwoman James, but also from the perspective of someone who has had to use these same bus lines, uh, before I reached this dais. Uh, many of you know that I attended college at OCC, I worked at Great Lakes Crossing, and the entirety of that time before 2019, I rode SMART buses in and out of Auburn Hills. Um, I had students from OU attend that, you know, helped in my campaign, as well as students who I went to OCC with, uh, people who I've, uh, who are disabled, who work at Great Lakes Crossing, because that's the only job that they have, and they're able to reach that via the ADA compliant buses that SMART has. And being able to try to, uh, speak with them from the perspective of this is factual. People will lose their jobs, people will lose homes, people will lose access to education. And unfortunately, again, there are some people who, uh, have the mindset of, that is an opinion that you can hold from your perspective, however, from mine, from ours, we, uh, disagree. Um, so again, unfortunately, that's how things have fallen. Uh, however, given the news that Mayor has given us, a little bit giddy on the inside, but, uh, that's just like the petty part of me. Um, but, you know, hoping that this is a, a further conversation about the importance of transit, um, not only as it pertains to Pontiac, obviously, and Auburn Hills, and actually Flint, which is also a, a part of this conversation, but, uh, transit as a conversation, uh, for our entire region. So, uh, again, as, uh, Councilwoman Rutherford said, make sure that you reach out to Auburn Hills and make your voices known if you've been, uh, you know, a beneficiary, no beneficiary of SMART, or if, again, you just simply, uh, agree with that. I think it's an amazing thing. And also, you know, push to the county, because there are other ways of also making sure that we have transit, such as a countywide opt-in, which has been floated around for a while. So also, if you believe that that's an idea, reach out to, uh, your county commissioner. So if you live in Pontiac, obviously, it's, uh, County Commissioner Angela Powell, um, but reach out to the people who have that influence, because this is an extremely important thing. And as you can see, a singular vote has had a, uh, well, potentially massive effect on a city of 60,000 residents. So that's all.
Others that wish to have the floor? That concludes, uh, this discussion item. We are now at, uh, the ordinance of adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Community Development, Article 7, Rehabilitation Agreements. We had a motion that was postponed from last week, so it's actively before us. Uh, I want to give the mayor and administration any opportunity, if they want to elaborate on further points, and obviously you've heard, um, some residents last week and this week that raised questions as well, so now's your opportunity to, to field what you like.
Thank you, council, council president. Uh, one of the questions that was raised last week was specifically around the bonding issues, and just wanted to bring some clarity to that. The first is the $15,000, um, mark. Uh, so $15,000 is the number that you will frequently hear us speaking about, but that number is not an absolute number set in stone. It's the average amount that it costs to demolish the, a, a property in the city of Pontiac. That number is actually set by a per square foot, um, basis. The second thing that I wanted to clarify was the question about, um, the, the, the cash bond. So, yes, there, there is the cash, there's a cash bond, there is a surety bond, and there is just, um, putting a certain amount of money in, in the bank that the city is then holding. So here's the difference. Obviously, cash in the bank is cash in the bank. Uh, surety bonds require additional, they're actually very difficult to collect on, they require additional legal, um, support and fees, which is why we have taken that option out of, of the ordinance. And then the cash bond is almost the same thing as actually having cash in the bank. It is a, it is a legal document that the city would hold, and if we got to the point where the city needed to actually use the money, we, we present that document, and we are presented with cash to do the job that we needed to do. So those were the clarifications that we wanted to bring to you.
All right. Uh, with that, we have the motion before us. Mayor, did you want to elaborate further? Okay. Uh, sorry to misinterpret that facial expression. I, uh, I'd like to make a, a motion to amend on the third page, number four, is talks about schedule of rehabilitation. And the final sentence says, "An additional 60-day period shall be allowed for properties located within the historic district." I move, uh, to amend that 60-day period to instead read 90-day period.
I support.
So it's been moved by McGinnis, seconded by Rutherford. Uh, to briefly explain, uh, my amendment, and it's okay if that's not where the will of the council is, but we like to do it concretely with motion, so that way we're being efficient with our time. Um, as Councilwoman James can attest to, if a property is in a historic district in our community, there's a higher threshold that they have to pursue. They have to, uh, get approval for exterior changes from the city's Historic District Commission, of which she has served on. So that's why I'm saying she can attest to it. Um, and partly what we've seen with supply chain and other sort of contractor issues, I fear that the higher burden that many of these historic properties are under warrants an additional window of time, in part so they can work through the administrative process, but also because it'll probably take more of an artisan-type, uh, or more rare services that are available, uh, with some of their improvements. And oftentimes, the homes in our historic districts, not only are they the oldest, but they're also usually the most complex, um, very outdated, uh, heating systems or other, you know, mechanicals, but also just the ornateness. That's why they're in a historic district, and that's why we want to, um, keep those, those qualities going. So my thought process is that inevitably, the building official, and I like that they have the ability to make that decision to, if good faith is being made and work is being done, but we should make it clear that for properties in the historic district, as it already spells out, that there's a, there's a window there that is more realistic and more adequate. So that's my motion to amend, but if you aren't feeling it, we could vote it down and go back to the main motion and, and, so that way we're talking about real changes in real time, rather than sort of hypothetical.
Point of order, uh, council president. If, uh, if I may, I have additional questions that might, um, spark additional amendments. Do you want to take those amendments together or separately?
We'll do them sort of piecemeal, so that way this will be one and done, if, it'll be as amended, and then we could take on other amendments as well.
Sounds good.
But if it's something that's contrary to this item, now would be a good time to flag it, so that we'll be like, okay, well, that's a better idea.
I'd call the question.
All right. So speaker's list exhausted, a speaker's list exhausted, no one else speaking on that amendment, and, uh, Councilman Goodman's calling the question, meaning, let's vote now, uh, without objection. Roll call on that amendment alone, not the whole ordinance itself, but saying instead of the 60-day period, we're saying 90-day period. Roll call, Clerk Doyle, unless there's any objections or clarification.
Harker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Aye.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six A's, no name.
That motion carries, so we now have the main, uh, motion before us as amended. Are there other amendments or, or clarification needed on the, the main body?
Yeah, I have a, a piece of clarification. Deputy Mayor, um, in, in, with respect to, uh, Mr. Bass's question, um, is there any objection to a department director having the, uh, an agreement to extending tho, those opportunities, or is there a reason why it makes sense for Swittnest, or, or what's, what's the, uh, the, your, your perspective on, uh, the building official being able, the inspector being able to sign off for additional time?
Yeah, so that, that's a great question, and I think, um, that may have been a, a miscommunication. The idea was that the building official is the person who has the ability to enter into the agreements. The building official also has the ability to assign a designee to enter into the agreements, um, on, on his or her behalf. And then whoever that was that entered into the agreement, then had the ability to, um, sign off on an extension. It wasn't that individual inspectors have total autonomy to say, I'm just going to extend or not extend.
Can you further define building official?
So building official is an actual title at the city.
That's the formal title of the...
Yes.
So the building official, can you help elaborate on that? I, I, I just haven't seen that job title before. Um, in, within the Building and Safety Department?
Correct.
There is a building official who is, uh, aware within the structure of the organization?
I'm not sure, if I may, council president, I'm, I'm not sure if building official is, and you may know better than I, deputy mayor, but I'm not sure that building official per se is the job title so much as it is defined under ordinance as a specific designated individual.
Okay, so what, so I think, I think just to make it really clear and simple, I think the concern, and, and I hope I'm addressing this correctly, uh, is that, uh, that there is a management oversight, right, of, of these sorts of decisions being made? So that way, those decisions aren't made in a favor-based relation, you know, or relationship-based manner, that it, it would be someone who is, has more of a, a broader perspective within the department that can, uh, you know, manage those and set precedence for those sorts of decisions?
Yes, that, that is, that is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilman James?
So that assumes that last, uh, section of the, it assumes that there would be management oversight over that, uh, decision.
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, and the other question that I have is, um, there was a comment made about commercial, uh, properties, and, and I know this ordinance really covers both when they are on the demolition list, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, it really would not make any, any difference. If, if they're on the demolition list, then you would follow this process.
Correct.
Okay.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilman Goodman?
Uh, I guess I need to make an amendment, uh, to fix some of the language. Um, develop, so on the very, very last, uh, piece of wording, the word development is still included, that despite, uh, Director of Community being, uh, crossed out.
Without objection, I'll consider that typographical, and the, the word development will continue the, the strike through of Director of Community Development. Clerk, any objection to that? Or would you like to see that as a motion? It's on the final page of the, we're really just changing something typographically, but we're willing to vote on it. That's fine. Okay, all right. So without objection, that is typographically been resolved. Thank you, Councilman. Was that it? Okay. Others that wish to have the floor? I have a second amendment. It is on page... I don't want to get it wrong here. Okay, so on the first page, number two, payment of demolition bond. Right now, the language says, "The property owner must post a cash bond in the amount equal to the cost of the demolition, as determined by the building official, which will be based on the average square foot demolition cost for the most recent demolition bid received and awarded by the city." My motion to amend is that it would now read, "The property owner must post a cash bond in the amount of $5,000," period. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, so it's been moved by McGinnis and seconded by Rutherford, and this is my rationale, and I'm not necessarily sold on it, but I'm trying to reach a, a potential resolution. For those that have been following this ordinance, you might, uh, have picked up on this, but for everyone's benefit, including those at home, this is dealing when properties are condemned, meaning they've gotten to such a point that they are in such a disrepair or that they are a, a threat to health and safety, that the city has ruled them not fit for habit, in, being inhabited any further by humans, or animals, I guess, but, um, humans being the main issue, that, uh, it's unsafe to enter. And when that happens, it is very hard and difficult to bring it, that building back to life, bring it back into useful life as a residence, as a commercial structure, or investment property, just standing vacant, that, and it creates this terrible vicious cycle of decline in our neighborhoods that sometimes neighbors have to deal with it for many years. So we've just voted on batch, a, a batch of, of both residential and commercial, uh, items that had been condemned, and our resolution is that we're using community development block grant funding, which is from the federal government, to improve neighborhoods and commercial corridors, we're taking those down. So that's the good news. But my sense of those listings is that they were all privately owned, that they were, you know, currently owned by a private individual. They were not city of Pontiac-owned, or Oakland County-owned, or Michigan, or state land bank. They were private owners. And I sense that none of them paid for the demolition. Can you share with me, and that's okay if you don't know, I mean, because we are inheriting these, and these are sort of, there's been a, a long track record over the last decade of a lot of demolitions, but, um, these are individuals that are trying to save a property, even if it's just to make money, or, you know, a home for them or a relative, they're trying to bring it back, you know, resuscitate the buildings. And then there are many others that just wither and rot, and then eventually, we, the taxpayers, through different funding sources, are demolishing them. And I wouldn't want to create a scenario, although I'm willing to, you know, vote it down if there's a state law that's handcuffing us, but I would rather us just say, okay, if you're doing it the right way, you're trying to actually save a property, no matter your motive, you're trying to, it adds value to our community, to our neighborhoods. I would like it to be straightforward, flat, where there's skin in the game, but it's not such a high hurdle that they might just say, screw it, let it rot, the taxpayers can deal with it, I'll walk away with it, from it, or I'll never even try and purchase it. But I, I get the impression, based on just our very limited time here on the council, that eventually, us neighbors, the taxpayers, are left holding the bag for demolishing these properties when they are not resolved. And even if somebody plays whack-a-mole and changes a bunch of ownership times, if they want to gainfully and rightfully get approval to repair them, you know, allow to be permits pulled when it's condemned, et cetera, I'd rather then at least there's money that they missed out on, but it's not so high that most residents or even investors are going to say, "I'm going to pass on that, that dilapidated building because it's a lost cause and it's too expensive, there's the barrier of entry is too high, I'll go for another property that doesn't have this." So that's kind of where my, my very recent thought process has come, as I've been reflecting on. We want to push these properties in the direction that adds value to the community, that eliminates blight, and if it's just sort of a, sort of endless cycle towards demolition, well then, okay, fine, but I'd like to think creatively about it. And if this isn't viable, that's okay, but I was just curious what you thought about that as a possible scenario. Mayor, you have the floor.
Well, I, I think the concern here is that these are properties that are in a dilapidated state, and that have been already slated for condemnation, they have in fact been condemned, and they're slated as a result for demolition. Uh, all too often, these are dilapidated properties that have been in a dilapidated state for a very long time, by the time condemnation occurs. Uh, and they're, the neighbors of these properties have been putting up with this blight for typically far too long. And what's, uh, the, the overall context of these rehab agreements is that because somebody, uh, says that they want to rehab the property, which again, has been in a dilapidated state typically for a very long time, by the time it comes time for condemnation, and by the time it's actually slated for demolition. And they're seeking to delay demolition for half a year, another half a year, on top of a lot of time that's already elapsed. And the point is, hey, neighbors have put up with these properties for a very long time, for far too long in the first place, and if we're going to delay demolition for another six months and allow neighbors to have to put up with this blight for another six months, that we need some security and some assurance that if in fact they fail to live up to that agreement, uh, that the city will have the resources needed to tear down that structure. And so I understand the desire to save structures or to rehabilitate structures, but keeping And so, I understand the desire to save structures or to rehabilitate structures, but keep in mind that the city and its residents are under these rehab agreements, allowing a dilapidated structure to stand for six months longer, requiring neighbors to put up with that, and I think it's the least we can do to ask in return that they put up some meaningful security that will ultimately pay for the demolition, if they're asking the city, and more importantly, the city's residents, to put up with this blight for an additional six months or more in some cases. In the case of historic properties, three-quarters of a year of additional blight that our residents have to deal with. And I think asking for this security in exchange for delaying demolition, these are properties that are in terrible shape, that are a danger to not just residents, but in many cases, the neighborhood, to kids who play in that neighborhood, and delaying demolition for six to nine months is a big, big deal. And I don't think it's too much to ask for owners, if they want to delay demolition, and these are properties that urgently need to be demolished for the well-being of the neighborhood, I don't think it's too much to ask those owners to put up enough security to actually pay for the demolition of the property.
Others, Goodman, then Nicholson.
So, I do have a question, and again, it's fine if you don't know the answer. Let's say of the number, which I obviously won't know off the top of my head, of properties that would fit into this agreement, do you have a number of, on average, how many Pontiac residents attempt to try to rehab these houses and buildings opposed to outside investors and the like?
Well, there are two, I think, questions. One is, what's the proportion of folks who enter into these rehab agreements between residents, or if you will, sort of ordinary, everyday residents versus wealthy residents or wealthy non-residents? And then the other question is, what's been the track record of actual success under rehab agreements, when it's come to everyday residents actually doing this and getting the job done? And I don't know the proportion offhand. Deputy Mayor Stevens, you may. We can certainly try to get that historical track record. We have some sense, though, and we actually can get those statistics, because at one point in time, there was a provision that Pontiac residents didn't need to put up a deposit. We have had conversations about the track record of that, and the indications are that the track record has been that the large majority of instances where that was done, where there was a waiver of a cash deposit because a resident took ownership and was trying to rehabilitate it, that at the end of that six-month period or beyond, that that rehabilitation was not successful, the city did end up demolishing the structure, but instead of it being done at the owner's expense, it was done at taxpayer expense, which is to say that everybody in the city ended up paying for that demolition instead of the owner. And part of the proposed changes to this rehab agreement are to try to avoid that scenario, to try to make sure that the owners of dilapidated properties actually pay for needed demolition instead of the taxpayers of the city, especially when we're delaying that needed demolition for six to nine months.
Councilman Nicholson, and then Councilman Parker, and Councilman James.
So, I want to give an example, and I understand the spirit of the amendment, and I hope that that spirit could be addressed through rehabilitation, lending product partnerships, or nonprofit organization partnerships in our future. But, a real-life example from District 2 in Rochshire Court. This is a large, multi-tenant townhouse development that is three buildings, where there was one property owner who owns a lion's share of those properties, they come to Blight Court after having a rehabilitation agreement, not making good on that agreement, being called to Blight Court, not coming to Blight Court, getting a default judgment. That default judgment from the Blight Court now renders those dollars that they put up under a similar, under the previous rehabilitation agreement guideline. So, we have some dollars now, right, to be able to do something with. Unfortunately, this property has a lot of intricacies, and that dollar amount doesn't necessarily equate to the entire amount that we would need to be able to properly handle that, but specifically in this instance, we're not talking about just a single property, but we're talking about a property that demolition costs could be in the hundreds of thousands, will be in the hundreds of thousands of dollar range. So, from my perspective, taking that down to five really just ties our hands behind our back, and I believe in the spirit of wanting to allow anybody's, you know, tenacity to be able to handle a property and a project like that, I think, without those means, it's the predictability of that rehabilitation agreement being satisfied is low. But I also think that we can look for other opportunities to support people that are looking to get into those arrangements without those dollars to be helped and supported in different ways.
Thank you, Councilman Parker, and then Councilman James.
Thank you. Well, my question, I'm sure it may have been answered last week during my absence, as I was looking at this, is, and you brought it up as a president, the listing that we approved a few weeks back of all that demolition, do they get to reapply if we do pass this for saving of their buildings? No? I heard a no.
The demolition, the batch 17 list will move forward as is, so this will not retroactively apply to that.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman James?
Yeah, I think that we're kind of getting away from the intent of this particular ordinance amendment in this last change that you want to make, because essentially, it changes what we heard as their real reason for redoing this and revising it. And I think I hear what you're saying, that we still want to be able to give people, maybe who are living in a building, this is their home, and it's condemned, and they still want the chance to try to work on that home. I think that we need to work on another tool to try to address some of the issues that you've brought up, but I think as far as this rehabilitation agreement, we're trying to do too much at this point, you know, with this last amendment.
Understood. Yeah, I'm really grateful for this conversation, it's going to make the end product stronger. My thought process is that, let's say we have two properties, they both got condemned on the same day, terrible luck, but one private owner says, "All right, we walked away, well, you know, that's that, we know that eventually, after a few years, it's finally going to get torn down, I'm not paying for it, I'll sell it to somebody for a buck, or, you know, I'll walk away from it." And then the next house next door has a private owner who says, "Okay, I screwed up, I let this linger too long, I, you know, didn't do what I was supposed to do, but I still want to try and make a go of it." Are we making this too financially burdensome, when if they both did nothing, they both maybe eventually get torn down? And so, that's kind of like where my thought process is at, and I'll give you the floor after this, but setting aside this amendment, presuming we vote it down, that I think that this is a very strong change. I think that it's needed. It removes a lot of confusion that the existing ordinance has. It removes sort of these various sort of different classifications that was alluded to of resident versus non-resident waiver or not waiver, who handles it. It got very clunky and not friendly for the use, the end user, and so I'm glad that we're strengthening it, and I'm grateful that my colleagues, you know, recognize that historic properties could use that additional time. But, so I don't take it personally, I just wanted us to work through that, because it's, a lot of people in the community have difficulty wrapping their minds around, well, that's a really big price tag. But I think the takeaway is, do not let a property get condemned, for your sake, for your neighbor's sake, for the city. If you love this city, do not let a property get condemned. Mayor, and then Councilwoman James.
Well, your last point, I think, is exactly on target, which is, the scenario that you mentioned, where there are two property owners, and the property is beginning to become dilapidated, these rehab agreements are not entered into early on in the process, they're entered into after condemnation, and the whole point of these agreements is to, is a form of forbearance, to delay demolition. That's the whole reason why these agreements are entered into. And so, this is, the condemnation only occurs after the property's been dilapidated for a very, very long time, and your point is right on target, which is, the key is making sure that properties aren't allowed to get into a state where the truly extraordinary step of condemnation is taken. Condemnation is an exceptional step for the city to take, and it means the property is in truly terrible, awful condition, and typically has been in that condition for many, many years. And to take the exceptional step of then delaying demolition under those circumstances for six to nine months, I think merits requiring property owners to put up a substantial amount of money to make sure that if we're going to delay condemnation, that those funds are there to pay for the condemnation, to pay for the demolition. I think to your point, we do want to provide real assistance to Pontiac residents to actually prevent that dilapidated state from getting to that point in the first place, and it's not lost on us that the major reason why residents don't make needed repairs to the property is because they can't afford those needed repairs, and we're very sensitive to that. We've been working very diligently to bring our community development block grant dollars, our CDBG dollars, back in-house. We've had conversations with the county about that, we've had conversations with HUD about that at the federal level, so that we can bring those dollars back in-house. And one of the things that we'd like to see happen with those dollars is that they're made available to provide some assistance, whether it's in the form of loans or grants, and if they're loans, very low-interest loans, to Pontiac residents to make those home improvements more affordable for folks, so that properties don't end up getting on the condemnation list in the first place.
Thank you, Councilman James, and we're on the motion to amend, which I'll be voting no on my own amendment.
Yeah, just, you know, basically the same thing, that when you get into a, you know, you're looking at your scenario, but the bottom line is, when you get into this kind of an agreement, you have to have some kind of resources to be able to do that. If you don't have those resources to go in there and to really, you know, do what has to be done in that house, then eventually, the house is going to still go into, you know, demolition. So, it's really not, you know, it sounds like it's a mean thing to do, but it really is not, because in order to enter into this kind of an agreement, you really need the resources. You really need to have financing to be able to do that. So, I think your point is well-taken, that it's best not to allow your property to get to this stage, to get to this state, because you do need resources if you're going to rehab, and something is already on the demo list.
Very good. Any further discussion on the amendment? With that, speakers list exhausted, motion that we're voting on is that amendment before us. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
No.
James?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker?
No.
One yay, five nays.
That motion fails. The main motion before us is the amendments, the ordinance change as amended. And is there any other amendments or discussion? I just want to make a final note, we use CDBG funds to approve a recent batch demolition. Other municipalities in our region have been able to use their CDBG funds for that kind of zero or low-interest loan for seniors, who often are on fixed income, and can be very, you know, like if a roof goes, or something like that, serious, then it can be a vicious cycle for the property. So, I do encourage the administration, when the time cycle makes sense, to consider that that could be a potential utilization of our community development block grant fundings to proactively, rather than spend money on the back end where we lose value as a community when a property is taken down. Any other discussion on this motion before us? Councilman Parker.
Thank you, President. I think that you've spoken to, the real issue is making resources available to people who want to rehabilitate buildings, that they can find low-interest loans to rehabilitate buildings. I think that's the real issue here, is people don't have money, there's not a whole lot of resources out there that will give them monies, and so, a building sits there, but if we can get the CBDG monies, or some other funds where people can get low-interest loans, I think we'll see some people rehabilitating more and more throughout the course of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Speakers list having been exhausted, we now will move into a roll call voting on this Article VII rehabilitation agreements. This is our ordinance, we've discussed the changes before us, and so, roll call on adoption. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six shays, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now at the resolution authorizing Foxhole, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization in Pontiac as a recognized nonprofit organization in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. There's a motion and a second that's already before us from last week's meeting. Any final discussion on this motion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on approval of the resolution, we'll call it the Foxhole Resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six shays, no nays.
That motion carries. Congratulations to your organization. And the entire city of Pontiac and the city council looks forward to collaborating in the future and learning more about your progress as you go forward. God bless you.
Thanks.
We are now at a resolution celebrating the history of legal trailblazer Oliver Green. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. So, we have a resolution celebrating the history of legal trailblazer Oliver Green. So, previously, the city council, of course, and nationally, the month of February is recognized as Black History Month, and we have so many interesting trailblazers in our community, this is one that sometimes gets overlooked. Wanted to read just a few of the whereas's, so you get some biographical information, but Oliver Mekens-Green was born in Gadsden, Alabama, in 1894, and as a child traveled to upstate New York early in the National Great Migration Movement, where he graduated from Ithaca High School, attended Cornell University, Syracuse University School of Agriculture, and then moved to Michigan to attend Michigan State University's Agriculture College, where he played in the school's band. During World War I, Mr. Green registered for the United States Army and served from 1918 to 1919, and he was a musician, third class, playing the cornet, and stationed in France, and after being honorably discharged, he returned to MSU and graduated in 1920. He attended University of Michigan Law School, graduating in 1924, and going down, he started his legal career in Grand Rapids, where he was the first black attorney elected as a member of the Grand Rapids Bar Association, and argued cases connected with advancing the civil rights of black residents. An especially prominent case he argued involved a local dentist who had been denied equal access to seating at the Keith Theater due to his race, and with many black patrons having been relegated to the balcony of that theater, and after a long fight, the Michigan Supreme Court determined that the Keith Theater had violated state statutes, with the verdict ending customary segregation in Grand Rapids. But not content to break barriers in Kent County, on the west side of the state, he moved to Pontiac in 1926, and he became not only the first black attorney in Pontiac, where he lived at 193 Branch Street in southwest Pontiac, but opened his law office at 42.5 South Saginaw Street in the state theater building downtown. So, that makes him also the first black attorney in all of Oakland County. He practiced law here for six years, but his life was tragically cut short in 1932 during a hit by another automobile driver when he would stop to check his gas tank. So, he died at St. Joseph Mercy Hospital here in Pontiac at just 38 years old, and he's buried at Oak Hill Cemetery, the historic cemetery here in Pontiac, but there is no headstone, there's no gravestone marker at his grave, in part because his family wasn't here, he had moved here for work, moved here for school, and then for work, and died at such a young age, and then time goes by. So, I really want to salute some of the community activists that we'll be honoring this evening, in particular Lori Miller, a member of our community, District 2 resident, who did a lot of research on Oliver Green, other local historians have done that work as well, but there's now a grassroots effort that has raised the money, raising the funds, so that way, the headstone can finally be laid at Oak Hill Cemetery, not only to honor him and his life, but also his trailblazing legal accomplishments, not only for Pontiac and for Oakland County, but even with broader national implications. So, that's the motion before us. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Rutherford?
If we wanted to donate to the headstone, how do we do that?
That's an excellent question. I don't want to speak presumptively, but we do have a few of those community activists, including Nancy Calendine, another District 2 resident, that Nancy Calendine, Portia Fields Anderson have been raising funds, District 2, there we go, okay, there's a trend, District 2 loves Oliver Green, that you can connect with them for other resources. But Nancy, if you'd like to come to the podium.
Yes. You can donate by making your donation to the Oakland History Center with the note on your check that it's for the Oliver Green headstone. Does that work, ma'am?
Sure, we can handle that. Yep, so she's saying for the Oakland History Center, you make the notation in the memo line that it's for the Oliver Green headstone, but that can go to that cause. They've raised a great deal, which we're here about, but that there is still a gap to fill. Any further discussion? Councilman James?
Mike, not just for this one, but for all, because they're so significant. Could we at least read, I know we've been saving time by not reading these whole things, but if we could read for all of them, from the "Therefore Be It Resolved," and just read those closing statements for each one of them, I would appreciate it.
You bet. You bet. Any further discussion? So on this item before us, it's "Therefore Be It Resolved," "The Pontiac City Council hereby celebrates the trailblazing legal career of Mr. Oliver Meekins-Green, the first black attorney in Pontiac and in Oakland County. And further resolved, the city council encourages Pontiac residents to learn about Oliver Green and reflect on the trailblazing achievements of his incredible life. And further resolved, the city council salutes the efforts by Pontiac residents to spotlight his story, including their proactive efforts to raise funds for the installation of a headstone at his gravesite in Pontiac's Oak Hill Cemetery. And further resolved, the city council commits to researching other meaningful efforts that the city of Pontiac can undertake to ensure Oliver Green is more broadly recognized and celebrated." With that, speaker's list exhausted, no further discussion. Roll call on the city council resolution celebrating the history of legal trailblazer Oliver Green. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six sheys, no nays.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution acknowledging the community service of Portia Fields Anderson?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Parker. So we are acknowledging the community service of Ms. Portia Fields Anderson. She did not know about this beforehand. She can take the microphone if she likes, but it might take her a minute. So while we're doing that, those that wish to speak on the floor, Councilwoman Rutherford and then Councilman Parker.
I've had the honor of knowing Portia Fields Anderson since I was seven years old. I remember when she chose me to play Rosa Parks, when we were reenacting, we were marching. I went to Bethel Elementary School, and one of the things that Portia always told us is that we have to have grit and determination, and I didn't understand what grit meant until I became older, and so I just want to publicly thank her for always sowing into kids who people didn't see were good enough, but she saw that we were more than enough. So I thank you so much, Ms. Portia Fields Anderson.
Since you've made it to the microphone, we'll give you the floor, and then we'll keep the speaker's list going. Or you could stand there and receive your flowers, and then you can speak. Your call.
I just want to share something I learned today. Oliver Green's family came to Pontiac because of the Christopher Northcross family. His grandfather was a pastor of Community Baptist Church in Grand Rapids, and they started talking, and as you know, in those days, they entertained people like W. D. DuBois and Randolph, and you always went to the pastor's house. And so they came to Pontiac to share all that loveliness. And I think it's so wonderful that we have people like Lori Miller and Nancy Calendine, who stood at a gravesite, looked down, they're honoring this man, they were honoring this man, and they looked down, and there's no grave marker. And they got on the phone, and real quickly, I want to say, Dr. Jeff, the dentist, we've got judges, we've got attorneys, and yes, we will always take more money. And thank you for acknowledging me on this very special day.
Very intentional. Today is her birthday, ladies and gentlemen.
Oh, no, I meant today is National Margarita Day.
Those are not under your chairs tonight, ladies and gentlemen.
This, what a lovely, lovely surprise, and everyone needs to know, I do what I do because my heart tells me to. And I will share more of that during open comments.
Thank you. Councilman Parker?
I'll just, thank you. I just wanted to say, I have not known this young lady long, but she certainly has been very active and involved, and certainly has inspired me to work even harder in the community, especially as she deals with our youth and our activities. So thank you, Ms. Portia, for all that you do. You have represented well.
Did you hear he called me Ms. Portia? That's my title, yes.
Councilman Goodman, and then Mayor Grimal.
I'm going to keep it rather short. I have known Ms. Portia for a rather, rather short time, but through the degrees of separation of people that we work with, we have come to meet each other. And a perfect example of why she's getting us honored is that the first thing that she said when she came to the podium wasn't about her, about what she does. It's like, did you hear that I learned this thing about what we were just talking about? Because in her mind, the first thing that comes to her is, how can, how can I talk about the community? Her first mindset is always there. And she literally portrayed that as she got to the podium. So I think that this is an amazing thing, and I think she's a very deserving person of this.
Yes.
Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Well, I just want to personally thank you for your amazing and longtime service. You and I have been longtime friends, of course, and I so admire your love for our community, your love for our residents, and your dedication to the community. You know, a lot of people love Pontiac, but you really translate that and have for many, many years into tangible action, most famously for our young people and for our parks, and it was great, of course, seeing you out at Murphy Park this past weekend. But thank you so much, from the bottom of our hearts collectively, for everything you do for this great city. Thank you so much, Portia.
Councilwoman James?
I would just like to say that I can remember when Ms. Portia Fields Anderson was Ms. Parks and Rec. to Pontiac, and she was the go-to person for Parks and Rec. Everything went through Portia. And I can remember being a young working woman and taking one of her exercise classes at the, at the, not, no, when you were at Holland, at the Holland Center. You were, you were all over, but it's just an awful, it's a wonderful thing to be able to acknowledge Portia, that she's here, to be acknowledged, we thank God for that, and so we're just thankful for her, for all the work that she has done, and she really has been that selfless person who just is constantly, constantly doing something for her community. So, thank you, Portia.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson?
I want to note the look of confusion and then, and then surprise, because truly that, that shows you how, how dedicated you are, when, when something like this, when somebody gives you an honor like this, and you're just like me, but your heart, like you said, it's because your heart tells you to do it, but your heart is so big, it's not, it's in music, it's in, it's in culture, it's in Parks and Rec, it was in dance, but it's been on boards and commissions and things that I'm sure didn't even interest you at different times, but you did it because you needed to, and you did it because you were driven to, and your heart is huge, and it, we, and to not see you somewhere would be shock and surprise on my face. So thank you for all you do, and I'm, I'm just honored to be able to honor you.
And with that, "Therefore Be It Resolved," "The Pontiac City Council hereby recognizes Pontiac resident Portia Fields Anderson for her remarkable lifetime of achievements and her extensive work to advance recreation, arts, culture, and play in our city, state, and nation. And further resolved, the city council recognizes her past service to the city of Pontiac and its residents through the city's recreation departments, youth recreation activities, arts commission, and other municipal boards, commissions, and civic institutions. And further resolved, the city council celebrates the community service and civic leadership that Ms. Portia Fields Anderson continues to display in Pontiac through various philanthropic endeavors, community organizations, and advocacy efforts to strengthen our parks and recreation. And further resolved, the city council considers Ms. Portia Fields Anderson a Pontiac citizen of great distinction." With that, speaker's list exhausted. Roll call on approving the resolution acknowledging the community service of Portia Fields Anderson. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six sheys, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to combine the next four resolutions, so we can talk about them in one fell swoop?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Goodman and seconded by Rutherford, that we combine council resolutions five, six, seven, and eight. Roll call on the combination effort, assuming there's no conversation on that. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six sheys, no nays.
That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we are tonight acknowledging the Oak Hill Cemetery preservation efforts of Nancy Calendine, Don Calendine, Larry Keane, and Lori Miller, who each have distinctly contributed countless hours, resources, love, and sweat equity to preserving and saving hallowed space, but also our space. This is a municipal cemetery owned by you and me, the taxpayers of Pontiac, and due to, due to recent financial difficulties, the city has not fulfilled its obligation as it should in recent decades, and the cemetery has suffered as a result. But thanks to the dogged determination and support and love that these citizens and other volunteers who have joined with them, but they have been in the driver's seat helping to gather volunteer groups, be the point person when things go awry, fielding and facilitating improvements, saving mausoleums from crumbling, from headstones from being lost forever, trees, many, many trees that are threatening the stability of Oak Hill Cemetery, but also researching and celebrating and making the connections and being a resource for the community, restoring and repairing the historic fences, the wrought iron fences of the cemetery, organizing the cemetery walks that have raised funds to do a lot of these projects. And so we want tonight to celebrate, and just on behalf of not only this council, this city hall, but the entire people of Pontiac, to say thank you, Nancy, thank you, Don, thank you, Larry, thank you, Lori, for going so above and beyond that it really can't even be quantified. Yes, round of applause. And in the next four years, we're going to do a lot of work to play catch-up, to try and do right by Oak Hill, by the people that are buried there, their families, who still mourn and love them and, and pay their respects there, but also that are still to come. These are active municipal cemeteries. We have both Oak Hill Cemetery and Ottawa Park Cemetery, and there are a lot of challenges that come with that, and we recognize that. But tonight, we want to acknowledge those that have been really holding down and, and really keeping things together, because it could have gotten much worse, and we could have lost forever some very nationally significant, but also personally significant to us as a community. So discussion from council members and mayor. Councilman Nicholson?
I think the fact that, that this work has been, this is hard work. This is not, this is, this is time, but it's sweat, and it's, and it's, it's not free. I know there's a lot of resources that went into this as well. So beyond your time, beyond your commitment, thank you for, for stepping up, and please, you know, anybody that is interested in this type of historic preservation, we have a lot of people here in the audience, but also our council president to reach out to. There is a lot more work to be done, so, and I know they're not done yet either, so please do support them by, by joining the effort.
Would any of the, the season's honorees like to take the podium? That is an opportunity afforded to you, but no obligation, because I know some of you intentionally don't like the limelight. Others that wish to have the floor. Mayor Grimal?
I just want to thank all four of you for your dedication over the years. I know each of you personally, and know that you've been dedicated to the city in many ways, but certainly most notably among, among others, your dedication to the Oak Hill Cemetery. I know that I met Larry for the first time out at Oak Hill Cemetery, and I know that I've seen all of you around town over many years now, volunteering in many ways and demonstrating your commitment to improving the day-to-day life here in our city. So thank you all so much.
Mr. Keane, you have the floor.
I'd say a word, Mr. Keane.
Yes, sir?
Yes.
You've earned it.
Good evening, council, mayor, everyone up there. I'm Larry Keane again, but like Tim was stating, I've always remembered this, so I want to state it again at different times. Tim come down there one time in his suit, this was quite a few years ago, and he thanked me and my nephews for what we were doing, and he said, you know, are you going to be back here next week or whatever? I said, without a doubt. He says, I'll be down there in my work clothes. And he was down there, and he worked probably from 10 to 2, something like that, but it was hot, sweaty day and all that, we had liquids, but I looked at Tim and I says, you know, if you have to be somewhere else, you're free to go. I mean, one hour is good, two hours, eight, but, you know, he was a busy man then. He says, I'm thank, he says, I thank you for asking me that, because I do have to be elsewhere. I says, well, we thank you for being there for that time he was there. He put his suit aside and came down at that point. But anyways, getting back to Oak Hill, it has had a lot of work done over the years, I mean, a lot of years, from the recent ones and everyone, Lori and all of them, the Calendines. And Mike, he speaks up all the time, he's, he's another one added. I'm not used, I've been down here before in the past through different council members, different mayors, and, you know, we talk about it, but that's about as far as it goes. So that's how we ended up down there to Oak Hill, doing everything, because times, the city was down, the country was down. But anyways, my parents and grandparents are there, and that's why I, I just started doing all kinds of work, and I still do. But anyways, Oak Hill is a, is a jewel. One day, maybe it'll be back to where it should be, and it's coming, slow. But anyways, appreciate everybody's, I'm going to knock this thing off yet, appreciate everybody's help, you know, and you, all of yous are listening today, and I appreciate that, and I want to thank each and everyone else up there. Thank you. There's one thing I've had in the past, see, I grew up in Pontiac, Watford, and all that, and as a teenager, I used to tool up and down Woodward, too, but, you know, on top of the Pontiac State Bank Building, the flag was always there, and you can see it at all four corners, points. And I asked about that maybe six, seven years ago, but couldn't get nothing done. But that flag is back up, whoever put it up, the new owner or what. But I wanted to thank him for that, because that flag is waving Old Glory real good, and I'm happy about it. So whoever got that job done, I'll tell you. So I'll, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others that wish to have the floor? Want to read the "Therefore Be It Resolved" sections, so this is true for the Nancy Calendine, the Don Calendine, the Larry Keane, and the Lori Miller resolutions. "Therefore Be It Resolved," "The Pontiac City Council hereby acknowledges Pontiac resident Nancy Calendine for her successful efforts to preserve, protect, and promote Pontiac's historic Oak Hill Cemetery. And further resolved, on behalf of the entire city of Pontiac and all its residents, the city council formally expresses our gratitude to Ms. Calendine for her hard work, sacrifice, and commitment to the cause of improving Oak Hill Cemetery. And further resolved, the city council commits to partnering with Ms. Calendine and other advocates of Oak Hill Cemetery to better care for the cemetery and those laid to rest there, and working to ensure that our municipal operations are strengthened for streamlined collaborative future efforts." Hearing no further discussion, we're voting on those four resolutions with one collective vote. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
You voted to combine them.
Oh, very good. Who moves this combined?
Four.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman and seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford that we adopt those four respective resolutions, and that is what the business was all speaking of. We'll consider that neat and tidy. Roll call, clerk. Roll call clerk.
Parker?
Good.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Round of applause for our four community advocates that have done so well. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to approve upgrades to the city of Pontiac's cable system in the amount of $210,000, $210,274.25, and authorize the city to enter into an agreement with Film Tools for $182,709.80, and Sound Planning Communications for $27,564.45?
I make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. We have a properly moved and seconded item of business before us. Mayor and administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'm going to allow Mr. Philip Brown to get into all the details, but I do want to emphasize two important points. Number one, as I think all of you are aware, and certainly the residents are aware, we need, desperately need some upgrades to the quality of our broadcasting. There have been a lot of problems over the years with residents being able to get good imagery and good sound quality from city council meetings, among other broadcasts and informational broadcasts from city hall on a number of topics. So that's number one. Number two, these funds are coming out, entirely coming out, of our designated cable fund, which is funded through cable fees. And so this money has to be used for this type of expenditure. It cannot be used to fix the roads, or to fix the parks, or to provide better city services, or provide youth recreation. It has to be used for cable-related expenditures, and we have enough money in that fund to cover these costs. And with that, I'll allow Mr. Brown to get into additional details.
Thank you, mayor, council. Good evening. My name is Philip Brown. I'm the cable director for the city of Pontiac, and basically, what you have before you is to allow us to upgrade our systems that is 20 years, 15 to 20 years old. I heard earlier about the, first, we need to have fiber, and you know, in our system, and I agree with that, that is the infrastructure, because right now, we're running on coaxial cable, which is simple, like cable TV, simple cable TV. But right now, we are in that process right now, which has already been paid for from the budget. So within the next two to three weeks, we supposed to have that installed in city hall at this time. Currently, before you, we're talking about the actual systems, like encoders, you know, cable encoders, players, viewing, old television viewing, and broadcasting devices or surfaces, so we can have better, a better system, because our system is pretty much ancient.
Questions? Councilman Goodman?
So for, so everyone has an understanding, because me and you have had our fair share of conversations. Can you put it into layman's terms for everyone in the audience, everyone on the dais, everyone at home, essentially where our current capabilities are with our system, and essentially where we're trying to go and what this is essentially meant to do?
Okay. So you know, to give the right analogy, or more analogy where everybody understands is, pretty much everybody here doesn't have a 20-year-old phone. Our current cable system is like, when we've had our cable system installed, we've had no social media. We didn't have Facebook, we didn't have, we probably didn't have, I don't think we had YouTube at that time. So what we're, what we will be installing is devices that will currently help our cable quality, for one, which is fiber, you know, which will plug in into our fiber optic to have a better, to have a more clear, more sounding, more stable system. Because as of right now, you already know with the mics, with the viewing on TV, it doesn't look good. And it hasn't looked good for the past, before I was here. But it was in the works for the past, first time, before 2016, and it just didn't have, it just didn't happen.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was Councilman Goodman ahead before. Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Nicholson, and then Councilman James.
Can you talk about the portable opportunity? Heaven forbid we have another plague and pandemic, and we have to move to a larger location as we did last time. Is there, I know the quality and getting all of that together was a really big feat. Is this easier, better, different?
Okay, so let's talk about viewing. Let's talk about the cameras. So right now, right now, what we did last year, we bought new PTCs, cameras, which you see on the wall, and we were at the Boeing Center. So what we had to do was purchase items that were not broadcast quality in order to, in order to make those meetings happen. And concerning the mics, everybody know the mics, we're having sound issues just like last week, or it can happen at any time. We are, these mics that we will be purchasing, they will be able to go to any location, and they will be charged, and we can use them with just about, just about everywhere.
Thank you.
Councilwoman James?
Yeah, I was going to ask, are you going to install everything, or is, because I see that your suppliers are California, so are you going to be doing the installation of all this equipment?
Okay, so our vendors, there are vendors that we've currently had for about 10 years, for even, for about 10 years, and they've been working with the city of Pontiac. They've been a vendor for the city of Pontiac for a long time. They've installed what you have up there right now, but I will be overseeing their work. I'll be overseeing the work, making sure that it is the quality that we expect, that citizens expect.
Okay, is there cost in here as well?
Yeah, all that's included.
Okay.
Others that wish to have the floor? This is the first time we are seeing this, but I don't feel a strong need to delay. I don't think there's further deliberation necessary, but it's, Councilwoman James, yes?
I would also like to know, when's the estimated?
Great question.
When's the estimated time that this would be installed if we were to, or?
To go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so first, right now, we're in the first phase, right now, which is the fiber. So we've, we're waiting for the fiber. The ground was too cold, we already had the plans and everything to install the fiber. Second, and then, we've already started purchasing some of the devices to go into the fiber so we can have a better, so it can look better. Only thing we have to do is, it would take, we would have to wait for the fiber. I say, we would, we could have everything installed within three to four months.
Councilman Goodman?
So I remember that this item was brought up by the previous council in regards to the cable upgrades in tandem with the upgrades of council chambers. And there will probably be some questions about as to if these things can be done separately, since the odds of us revisiting, the redoing of council chambers will probably be something that we will come to eventually.
Right.
Installing all of this new technology to do these meetings in city hall, how does that work and/or affect any potential re-renovations of?
The chamber? Okay, so after, after we install the infrastructure equipment, the fiber, and the equipment that we need in the cable office, we need to have conversation with council, because it's your council chambers and executive, to find out what do you exactly want aesthetically? And then we would have to work with building, the building department, DPW, and the building department, because it is more than just the electronics, it is the building.
My final question is related to Councilman Goodman's. There was a lot of murkiness about that period where these council chambers were quote-unquote "undergoing renovation." Is there still financial questions around, or is it sort of the matter been resolved in terms of reconciling what the previous mayor claimed was being spent versus what was budgeted for the technology related to what the room we're in tonight?
Great question, President McGinnis. I'm not aware of any discrepancies in that regard, but Deputy Mayor Stevens, have we uncovered any discrepancies in terms of the budgeted amount versus the expended amount?
I have not seen any.
Fair enough. It's just a question that was really recurring where people, it just didn't make sense in terms of amounts that were said to be used for renovating these chambers in tandem with the cable funds, and then once, once there, it didn't seem as though the finished product matched what was expended.
I will say, I was not aware of that concern until now, and now that I am aware of it, we'll delve into that and get the specifics on all of that, and let the council know what we find out.
Understood. I'm most excited about this item because I think it'll help us deliver services and communicate opportunities to residents much more effectively. The cable channels right now are not effectively utilized, I imagine. That's your, that's your assessment, that's sort of the new administration's assessment, that that's a better opportunity, that there's technological barriers. My understanding, it's basically you're operating under current analog systems, is that real?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're pretty much, all the systems right now, currently, they can fail at any moment, pretty much. I have one, you know, we have three basic systems in the cable office. One system is overheating. It can, it can go blue screen, or it can crash at any moment. The other system is too full, and it's too old to upgrade, and that system has crashed also. And then the major system, which is the encoders and the other technical equipment, in the past, since I've been here, those have crashed a couple times, and if, and if they do, and it's not a matter if, it's a matter of when they do, we would have to purchase, we would have to purchase them. There is no fixing, we would have to purchase new anyway.
Others, hearing no further, new recognition? Councilman Goodman again.
And so typically, this would be the area where I ask you the most questions, because I think out of everyone on council, I have certification experience when it comes to technology, and we've had our fair share of conversations, and I think this is an extremely important thing that we have to do at this point. Because again, I've been in your office, I've seen the fact that there are still CRT monitors sitting in your office, and tapes that have to be kept because they're not digital yet.
Right.
And how many things in this office are, to put it frankly, as old as me, if not older?
Right.
And nothing in my grandparents' house, great-grandparents' house, any of my extended family, besides the furniture, is still as old as me and still being used. And I think this is extremely important. I think, again, I've had my fair share of conversations with you as to how this affects and will benefit the city. So I have no qualms about this, and actually, I'm rather excited.
Me too.
A final question I'll have for administration that doesn't have to be answered tonight. I'd be interested, after the expending of this, assuming it's, you know, right on the nose, what would be remaining in those cable funds? That would be helpful to know, but I'm sure we'll get into it through the budget consideration process for the upcoming fiscal year. Any other discussion on this motion? Is there a strong desire to postpone, or shall we blaze forward with a vote?
Vote.
Hearing no motion to postpone, and the speaker's list having been exhausted, on the approval of the resolution to approve the upgrades to the city's, city of Pontiac's cable system, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now in the Department of Public Works realm. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Paymark Enterprises, Inc. for $1,622,250.70 for the Mill Street reconstruction project, and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Oakland County Water Resources Commission to reimburse the city for the costs on the Mill Street reconstruction project associated with improvements to the Oakland County Water Resource Commission's water infrastructure?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. That item is now before us. Mayor and council for context, or mayor and administration.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'm going to allow Mr. Siddiqui to get into the details. I know we spoke a little bit about this at the council meeting last week. I know that council president Protem, William Carrington, asked for some additional information about both the unionized nature of various workforces, as well as the number of Pontiac residents working for various contractors, and also the diversity, the ethnic diversity and racial diversity of the company's workforces as well, all of which are very important questions. I know that the answers to those questions have been distributed in writing to council members, and we just recently obtained this information ourselves. Certainly, I think there's a lot of reason for concern in terms of the answers, really regarding all of the contractors to varying degrees, and I think it's important for us to be thoughtful and deliberative about whether we want to adopt some sort of responsible contracting ordinance, and we need to be thoughtful about going about that in a way that's comprehensive, that will be consistent in applying to contractors across the board, and also that is within our legal ability to do. So you know, I welcome that conversation. I think it's an important conversation that needs to occur. I would caution against trying to do that on a case-by-case basis, including this particular contract, but I think it's important for us to look at what kinds of policies we want to put in place long-term to make sure that we're expanding opportunity to more Pontiac residents, and that we make sure that workers hired by contractors that we do business with are treated with dignity and respect, and are provided livable wages. So I welcome that conversation.
Mr. Siddiqui?
Good evening. So the mayor, you know, elaborated on, we brought the answers to the questions that were raised last week. I also wanted to address Mr. Ibarra's question earlier. The sanitary sewer is not being touched on this project. We did do our due diligence in asking WRC to look at doing improvements in the sanitary sewer. They looked into their system there, and they decided they did not need to make any improvements. They will be, they are aware of the project, they'll be out there with their inspectors, so you know, we can, we can avoid any unforeseen circumstances. As far as this project right now and the resolution and the award of the contract, I think there's a couple items. One is obviously who to award the contract to. The other item is, do we want to pursue the alternate paving method or not? So those are, I think, the points that I'd like some clarification from council.
Those that wish to be recognized on the motion before us. Councilman Nicholson?
Thank you for collecting this information. I too was surprised at the honesty in some of the answers that these vendors supplied to us. And I know that we have used the low bidder in previous times. What is the, for administration, what do you think the timeframe would be on putting an agreement of that, of that context together? Is this something that exists within other cities that you think we could find a good example and model, or is this going to be a very time-consuming, legal-involved activity?
The short answer is, there are responsible contracting ordinances that other cities have adopted, and so there are good models out there, including in a number of southeast Michigan communities in metro Detroit. So we don't need to look far to get some good sample language. Obviously, we want to do our due diligence in terms of a legal review, and we want to make sure that we consult with our DPW department and other departments, but it really shouldn't take terribly long time. We, of course, have a lot coming at us here as the new administration, and as we come up to speed on a number of very important priorities, all of which have their own urgency. So there is, you know, some, some limited capacity to do everything simultaneously, of course. We all have a finite number of hours in the day, but this is certainly a high priority for us, and I think we should be able to get something in place within the next couple of months, if that's the pleasure of the council.
So it certainly is my interest. So it certainly is my interest. I would hope that if, and it sounds like it's favorably looked upon, I think that we could also, of course, do a resolution, because I think most of us would want it to go in that direction. But just for context, I'm looking at the next bidder, to be correct, the next bidder would be Great Lakes Contracting. Do we have past experience with them doing work in the city, or is this, would this be their first contract?
No. Great Lakes Contracting is actually our emergency pavement repairs contractor.
So everyone is aware, what we're looking at is some documents that give us answers from the contractors related to whether or not they're unionized, their workforce is unionized, whether or not, if not, is there compensation union scale? What is the percentage of minority employees, and are there any Pontiac residents? The lowest bidder came in with some of the worst responses, which is why we're considering, I think, something like this so intensely. As the backup, while they are not unionized, they are union scale wages, but we go from a 10% minority workforce to 59% minority workforce. There are no Pontiac residents, but that is reflected amongst all of the contractors. So really, the cost, the raw cost difference that we're looking at, and can you remind me, are these final dollar amounts with the reimbursement or without the reimbursement?
That's without the WRC reimbursement.
Okay. So the raw difference is $77,646, when we're talking about a minority workforce going from 10% to 60%. Otherwise, they're both union scale, both non-union contractors. If we were to go to the next union contractor, we're looking at a difference of $118,000 or a 7% increase. And they have a similar, a higher minority, their union, their union scale, of course, but 70% to 80%. So, you know, as a matter of practice, I think, you know, I think in administration, is it true that the concern of going maybe to not just the backup contractor, but really kind of blowing past all of these bids would set precedence and potentially put us into a murky situation?
Well, I think there are a couple of concerns that I have, and some of these, I'm not sure of the legal lay of the land, but potential legal landmines could be that trying to take into account considerations that were not part of the specifications or part of the letting of the contract retroactively after already going out for bids could create some problems, as opposed to having a policy in place and having requirements or benchmarks in place before we go out and seek bids on a project. So that would be one concern or consideration. The other concern and consideration I have is I believe we're getting, and I could be wrong about this, Mr. Siddiqui, but I believe we're getting some funding from other sources, perhaps like MDOT. I'm not 100% sure of that, but to the extent that we are getting some funding from other sources, and to the extent that the Oakland County Water Resources Commission is a partner in this, not for sewer work, as you said, but for water main work, one question is whether there are any strings attached as a result of that that could require us to go with the lowest bidder. And I don't know the answer to that. But those are just a couple of questions that I would have, such that if we wanted to either go with another bidder, or whether we wanted to go out and ask for new bids, I would want us to seek some counsel from the city's attorney first before we go down that road.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, so this project is fully city-funded, except for the reimbursement from the WRC, plus a reimbursement from the Oakland County Board of Commissioners through their local road improvement program. There's no real strings attached to that program?
So just to voice my favor, I certainly hope that we go towards, I think, I don't want to cause, personally, wouldn't want to cause any turmoil over or augmenting this process after it's been, you know, these bits have come in. I think time is of the essence, of course, for looking at this project's timeline, but responsible contracting is something I personally would be in much favor for. I want to, my last piece is, just as I did in the last one, to put in the frame, as all of the snow is thawing and we're looking at all of these potholes and people are saying, you know, years upon years, we've been patching these holes, and why can't we do something permanent? Just as a frame of reference, we're talking about Mill Street from water to here on. So it's only a matter of a few blocks, and to, not to replace, but to rehabilitate with is $1.6 million. So in the frame of the entire city's budget, replacing every street that has potholes is not possible. So we're going to do as much as we possibly can, but in this, you know, this project, just to give that frame of reference, it's, you know, my first term in city council, mind-blowing to see those costs.
And just to further clarify on the contractor, the responsible contractor, I guess, if you, you know, want to call it that, is, I believe major contracting is the contractor that is unionized and has the highest diversity, but they're also the highest bidder on the project. Just want to make sure that's clear to the public. And actually, major contracting is a very good contractor. I've worked with them down in Detroit, and they're used to a lot of the requirements that Detroit has with regards to Detroit residents, hiring, and all this.
And finally, with respect to that comment, they're expensive because they're good, because they treat their employees with respect and dignity.
I'm sure, yes.
I'm sure of that. Thank you.
Councilman Goodman?
And to, you know, pay you back off of Councilman Nicholson's point, I also have the same concerns. Because if we look at this, for the most part, there are no Pontiac residents working for any of these contractors. So that's kind of a moot point. But then we begin to look at the different things that are important other than just cost. Because again, with Pontiac being the city that it is, I mean, we know our union heritage here, and we know the quality that we come to expect from union work. And again, so like you said, there are no necessarily strings attached that require us to go with the lowest bidder. So there are things that we do have to consider outside of just cost. We have to talk about quality, which, as you mentioned, and as, again, the correlation, but not causation, that comes with having union staff. And again, the increased cost that comes with increased quality of labor. So I would just like to also point out that I think going lowest-cost bidder when we have to, obviously, is a thing that we must do, but I think that we have to do our due diligence to make sure that we're spending taxpayer money, not only in a way that is responsible and makes sense, but also in a way that represents the city's mission values in terms of supporting workers and, you know, having high-quality work done for our citizens.
Anyone else wish to be recognized? So what we have before us is something that was discussed last week. The administration provided us one week ago, all the bidders. So we had that information. It led to a very substantive question that received answers, so I thank the administration for getting that information. But based on my read of the situation, we're presented with what we're presented with, and that we need to, going forward, beef up how we handle and put out, you know, put out our requests for proposals, but then also, systemically, what we want to put in place to lead to the best finished product and workplace, utilizing our taxpayer dollars. And I hope I've captured that sentiment right, but that's the vibe I'm getting from my colleagues. Councilman James?
Well, I've got, I share the concerns that Councilman Nicholson and Councilman Goodman have expressed, but I also feel very strongly that this is one consideration, and it should not be the call. It's a consideration. And so how that's made, you know, is something that we would have to kind of work through with executive and legislative branches, you know. We would need to kind of have some kind of an understanding of it, but I don't support it being the only call. It's a consideration, and we want to weigh it very carefully because, as you said, we have these considerations, you know, in the city that we want to see, you know, minority employees being given the same opportunity to work as anyone else. So it's something that we need to, we need to talk about. It's a pretty complex question, and the question is, do we want to hold this up until we get the understanding of how we want to move forward?
Mayor Grimal?
Just to underscore the complexity of it, and there are ways to address these things, so I think we can navigate these waters, complex though they are. But just to underscore that complexity, state law prohibits local prevailing wage ordinances. State law prohibits us from making decisions based on the unionized status of workforces. State, the state constitution, since the anti-affirmative action amendment passed back in '06, I believe it was, '06 or '08, prohibits us from making decisions based on the diversity of the workforce. Now, there are ways that we can take into account the level of training of the workforce, which is often correlated with unionization. There are things we can do to make sure that city residents are hired by contractors, or that more city residents are hired by contractors, and that's often correlated with additional ethnic and racial diversity as well. So there are ways to navigate these waters, but they are very complex, and there are legal restraints on exactly what the city can consider when it comes to making some of these decisions about contract.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question.
Councilman Parker?
Perhaps this one was answered last week, but did any of these, have any of these companies worked in the city before, and if so, where?
Yeah, so Paymar has, Great Lakes Contracting, as I mentioned, is our emergency pavement repairs contractor. And then, well, FDM did not, major contracting, at least in recent history, has not worked for the city. Mark Anthony has worked for the city. They did the Vanguard project last year.
Hearing no further discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Parker, you still have the floor.
So in regards to the ones that we're recommending, have anybody seen their work and okay with their work? Again, you may have answered this last week.
So they did, most recently, they did the local roads. So at least while I was here, they did Sterling Lakes, you know, that.
Little piece in the edge of the way?
Right. And they did the Oak Ridge, I believe, down on Golf Drive. I might be forgetting the name of the street now, in the subdivision there. And then they did several, several local streets before I joined, but as part of the same contract. Michigan, yeah.
And we're still, we're still pleased with what they did?
And the same goes for Great Lakes. I think we're pleased with their work and Mark Anthony as well. And speaking of Vanguard, sorry, but my second question was, do we want to go with the alternate or not? The benefit with the alternate is it's a shorter time to open the traffic from, it goes from like five to seven days to one day, one to two days. So there will be less impact on the ambulances there at the hospital. And then also, it's an innovative method, and I think if we're promoting that, it's something that will become more cost-effective as other contractors adopt.
So what we have before us is Paymar Enterprises.
So I do have one question. What is the cost difference between the alternative and the lowest bidder that is in the contract currently?
So with the, so Paymar is also the low bidder on the alternate, and so the cost difference is $28,000 more for the alternate pavement. And I think, again, it comes down to, there's only one contractor in the state that does this work currently. If local contractors start adopting, that will become more cost-effective.
And so in part, the alternate proposal is referencing the roller method, correct?
Right. Roller compacted concrete.
And that's the price differential that Councilman Goodman has just elevated. The motion before us is currently for the lowest contract for the primary, not the alternate.
I think both are in there. It's, it's up to you to choose which one you want.
All right. So right now, we have the lowest. Is there a consensus, and we can make an amendment on what's before us, if we want to go with the alternate? Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Yeah, I can't speak to what the motion that was made by council actually is in reference to, whether it's the primary or the alternate, but a couple of questions about that, Mr. Siddiqui. Have we had conversations with the hospital about the impact on ambulances and that sort of thing? And if so, is there a reasonable alternate approach to the hospital or the emergency room entrance for hospitals to take? And so how big of a hardship is that for them? The other question I have is, is there any difference between the two methods in terms of how long the pavement will last?
So we have had conversations with the hospital, and we've phased the work so that the work is going to be done in two phases, and the phase line basically is the ambulance bay. So one bay will be impacted, there's two bays out there, one bay will be impacted at any given time, the other bay will always be open. As far as pavement life expectancy, this pavement, from what I'm seeing, is going to last longer than the traditional concrete. How much more, I can't say, but I don't have that data. But looking at just the material and, as we took the cores from the pavement and the cross-section, everything, it's, because, sorry to get technical here, but, so what destroys the pavement is sort of the freeze thaw, like we're seeing right now, right? The water gets in, sits there, freezes, and expands, and starts. This pavement is much denser, much more dense than the, than the traditional concrete, and so there's less space for water to get in there. And that's the basis for me to predict that the pavement is going to last long.
I'm quite open to paying the, having the city pay the additional $28,000 if we think the pavement will last longer. I'm not inclined to have the city pay more to reduce the project length by four or five days, but, and obviously, this is not slated to be voted on tonight, so perhaps, Mr. Siddiqui, if you think there may be some data out there on pavement longevity based on these two different methods, it might be informative to council's decision, if you're able to obtain some and provide it before next week's meeting.
I can look into that.
Councilman Nicholson?
Yeah, just, I mean, just prorated, right? I mean, 1.6, you know, 1,622,250, and we'd be, unless, we think this road's not going to last 56 years, just on an annual basis, the 28,000, even if it adds two years of time, it's cost-effective. So, you know, I mean, that, to me, yeah, I agree. If it, if it could prolong the life of that road, I think it makes sense if it.
Is there a motion to amend? The motion we have before us is the 1,622,250, which is considered the primary motion. Is there a motion to amend to substitute the alternate amount, which is the 1,650,144.35?
I actually would make a motion to table this to the next meeting, so we can get that, that information about payment lifetime.
So there's a motion to postpone for one week. Does that concur?
Yep.
That reflects your wishes, and there's a second. So now there's a motion before us to postpone this item for one week, and we'll be back in next week's council meeting. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Hearing none. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to approve mayor's reappointment of Ashley Fegley, Christopher Northcross, Mona Parlov, and Lucy Payne, and the appointments of Renita Dival, Mike McGinnis, and Tim Shepherd to the Pontiac Planning Commission?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This item is before us. Mayor and administration, you have the floor for context.
Well, thank you very much, President McGinnis. The previous set of folks who have been serving on the planning commission for some period of time were never ratified, if you will, by city council, and state law requires that appointees to the planning commission be approved by city council. What that means in terms of the previous administrations appointing people without being approved being approved by city council is, I suppose, open for some legal interpretation or speculation, but we want to do things the, the right way, we want to make sure that we're complying with state law requirements, as well as our own ordinances, which require city council approval. And so we evaluated the folks who had been currently serving on the planning commission, we're recommending the reappointment of four of those individuals, the appointment of two new individuals from the community, and although the previous mayor had appointed herself to the planning commission, it is my desire not to serve myself on the planning commission, but rather to have a representative of city council on the planning commission. I think it's very important for city council to have an opportunity to provide their input early on in the process, so that the process is truly collaborative. And I reached out, as, as you know, to you, President McGinnis, and asked for your input about who might make sense as a city council appointee. And perhaps because you're the chair of the Economic Development and, and Planning Subcommittee, you recommended that you'd be interested in serving yourself, which I thought was a great idea, and that's how I came to the determination of appointing you to the planning commission. So I'm, I'm really excited about the group of individuals that we're recommending, it actually improves and increases the diversity of the planning commission somewhat, and I think is a really well-rounded group of folks, based on experience and professional credentials as well. So we're, we're excited about these recommendations.
With that, Councilman Nicholson.
I've an ethical question, is there an ethical obligation to recuse themselves? I, I just, the reason why is there's a real estate agent that does a lot of work in the city, a, a property owner that has a number of properties that I'm sure will come before planning commission, and then a leasing agent as well, who's involved with the property owner who does a lot of commercial work in the city. I just want to make sure that anybody that's on this commission would recu, have to be required to recuse themselves from those decisions.
It's a really good question, I'm glad you raised it, not just because it's critically important that we avoid those conflicts of interest, but it's one of the reasons why we prefer not to have a vote occur this evening, but to wait a week for the vote, because before that vote occurs, we want to make sure that they all sign a conflict of interest disclosure and recusal form. And so we've asked the city's attorney to draft that form, we do have that form, we are, we're doing some final reviews of that form. But before the council makes a final vote on these folks, we want to make sure that we have those signed forms in hand, and we've talked with those who were proposing to be appointed about signing those forms, they've said they're willing to do so, but we want to make sure we actually have those signed forms in hand before city council votes next Tuesday. And I'll add that the next planning commission isn't until next Wednesday, and so we do have the luxury of waiting another week before voting to confirm these appointees.
Thank you.
Others, the wish to have the floor. Councilman Parker, and then Councilman Goodman.
Yeah, I just recall that earlier in the conversation, there was some discussion issued regarding the interviewing of all the candidates. So did all the candidates get interviewed? Or just, how did we handle the interview process, I guess is my question, did all the candidates get interviewed?
Yeah, all of the candidates were not interviewed. We did notify, I personally notified and called all of the applicants before tonight's meeting, so I'm not sure where the comment came from about notification of applicants. We have gone back to everybody who applied for appointment, I personally called all of those who applied for appointment. We did not actually interview everybody, but everybody filled out an application, was invited to send in their resume and other information about their professional background. And to my knowledge, it has not been past practice to interview everybody who applies for boards and commissions. And I don't think that's been past practice here in Pontiac, but I also don't think it's routinely practiced in most other communities in Oakland County.
Anything further, Councilman Parker? Councilman Goodman?
So the, I guess the one question I'll have is, I guess, probably most likely the community question of, to the appointment of Council President McGinnis to the planning, yeah, to the planning commission. What is the process in which a person who has either an elected office or in a job in City Hall also gets appointed to the commission? Not that I have a problem with it, but I do want to ask that question, considering that, again, you do serve in elected office, and it's just a question that I feel people may have at home.
Yeah. It's generally my view that unless somebody is an elected official, that we frankly don't want employees of the city serving on boards and commissions. And I've already communicated that to a number of folks, including an applicant to the planning commission, which is a reason why I'm, I'm not recommending their appointment to the planning commission. It's also true and applicable for one of the, the individuals who was appointed by the previous mayor to the Marijuana Commission. It's actually true of two people, the previous mayor appointed to the Marijuana Commission, because the mayor also appointed herself to the Marijuana Commission, but also appointed another city employee. So in general, it's, it's my view that we should avoid appointing city employees, or at least full-time city employees, to boards and commissions. And I've begun communicating that on an individual basis to those who have applied, who are city employees. In the case of President McGinnis, obviously, being a city council member is not a full-time job, as, as you're all aware, and I think it's important that we have representation of city council on the planning commission. That is routinely done by other communities. Our city ordinance allows for one elected official to be on the planning commission, and as I said earlier, it's my preference to have a member of city council rather than myself in that role.
Awesome, thank you for giving that information. And it's, it's worth pointing out, it was extremely magnanimous of the mayor to, to create that scenario, because he has the authority to appoint himself to it, that is what the previous mayor did for her eight years in office, and before that, Mayor Jokowski appointed his deputy mayor, as, it was the chair of the planning commission at that, then Deputy Mayor Glass. Prior to the emergency manager, there had been a city council member that had served on the, on the planning commission in some capacity, and I don't want to quote it as, you know, from a tablet on high, but that there was intentionally a, a way in which the city council could have a liaison to the planning commission, because all they do ultimately is recommend. So it's coming up to us, and it's important in, as terms of setting the agendas and seeing what's coming and going, especially when it intersects with our subcommittee, there's going to be a lot of overlap. But it's a way to sort of help be that traffic cop with those items. Councilman Nicholson?
I want to thank you, Mayor, for that opportunity for the council to be involved in that process, I think it will help have applicants who are coming to our planning commission have a good understanding of the will of the council, especially even from not just the council's perspective, but also from the subcommittee that deals specifically with those items. You know, and we sometimes have to hear from the same person three and five times, because changes are asked and requested of them, I think having that representative that will be involved in that final and understand, or understand the will of that final decision will be helpful at, at the beginning stages of that process. So thank you, I appreciate that opportunity.
Hearing no further discussion, is there a motion to postpone for one week?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
I believe I, did I hear a move as well? So a move from Parker, seconded from Rutherford, that we postpone for one week, in, in large part because the administration, to ensure that we can enshrine protections from conflict of interest can be facilitated on the administrative backend. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Hearing no discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's.
Thank you, that brings us to public comment this evening. Residents and, and community members are given three minutes to address this body, it's the public's opportunity to help share and shape their feedback, but also, it is a time in which, I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty even speaking, just because there's so many people speaking in the audience. When public comment happens, it's for the person recognized, they have the floor, so that the audience is being respectful, listening, but also, the council will not necessarily be engaging, we respond when our, the mayor's closing comments and council coming, closing comments come afterward. So since President Pro Tem, Carrington is out this evening, Councilwoman Rutherford has the clipboard, so she'll be calling off names for people to be recognized for three minutes. Councilwoman Rutherford, who's up first?
Our first speaker is Chuck Johnson.
And a very happy birthday to Mr. Chuck Johnson.
Thank you very much. That makes me the senior in the room, I think. Anyways, just real quick, so many things has passed my mind here this evening, and a lot that the mayor has shared with us as relates to a couple of different items, and I agree with how he's brought those matters to the commissioners, and, and, and I think that we should follow that lead that he's put forward, because it's fruitful at a later date and time, I'll speak more about it next week. Anyways, I've offered a couple of different times, comment to Councilman Parker as it relates to the senior building on Paddock Street that caught fire a few years back, and we haven't done anything as it relates to that project, and it's my understanding that there was an agreement by whoever owned the property, or however, whatever involvement there was, that if the building didn't get rehabbed, it would get torn down, complete demolition from the, from the foundation up, so it couldn't be rebuildable. But whoever collected the money, so far, they've put up the elevator towers, but hasn't gone any further, and I would think that it's time, Mayor, that that project either gets underway one way or the other, up or down. Further, as it relates to that bond issue, you know, we, the city, we collect a certain amount of tax dollars as it relates to these properties, and as you indicated, Chair, you shouldn't let it go down. But what happens is, the citizens of Pontiac is being cheated, and I said it 100 times over, that those properties that being demolished, those properties don't necessarily belong to the city of Pontiac, it's Oakland County's problem. So why can't Oakland County put those bond dollars up to help the city of Pontiac do that rehab that we were talking about here? It, it, I think the mayor understands and knows where I'm coming from, these are not the responsibilities of, of the city of Pontiac and the citizens in most cases, and we're being cheated, in a sense, because the tax dollars that should be used, and the bond money that should be used, should be posted by Oakland County. Now, I don't have enough time, but the gentleman was here from the county, Mr. Wittenberg, he, he made a, a very valid comment about how people could go. But now, see, what happens is, the county takes these properties and either sell them or auction them off, but those dollars that they generate from that don't even go to the city of Pontiac, it goes back into the county's coffers. So let the county step up to the plate and put these bond dollars up in, in place, and try and do this thing just a little bit differently, so that the citizens of Pontiac can benefit from it. I don't have enough time, but I'll be back, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quincy Stewart?
And a very happy birthday to Mr. Quincy Stewart as well.
Yay, cute.
This week, only a day after the 57th anniversary of Malcolm X's assassination, I would like to continue in the same vein as in my speech two weeks ago, but this time expand on what is beyond being labeled radical, and to what is an independent thinker, and what is a self-centered thinker. As I've grown over the years, both politically and as a man, I have come to know that the right to independent thought is precious, the right to self-expression as a human being, to be exactly who I am and not a replica of someone else, is the ultimate expression of human dignity, even when others may disagree with it. Yet I have also discovered that as a so-called black man, a state of mind that refuses to see raw naked truth cannot be independent thought, it is selfish thought born of delusion. The objective reality that we continue to live under a police state, that white supremacy as an institution yet reigns, that miseducation and the overarching threat of fascism from a burgeoning white backlash to what amounts to piecemeal gains by black folks are realities that must create by default a certain monolith among so-called black folks. Yet this collective cognitive distortion we suffer from, we still cling to the unqualified belief that this system will one day self-correct, that King's dream of a beloved society will be by osmosis appear at some national moment of clarity, and epiphany is not only delusional but dangerous. I agree that black people are no more or less monolithic than any other group of human beings. You'll notice I did not say race of people, because race is an illusion. I conclude with this, I am not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat. On some issues, I may hold what some may consider conservative views, still others quite liberal. Both of these terms are much as an illusion as race is. Ultimately, as a human being, I reserve my right to observe, analyze, and act on accurate data as I can get, without the stagnating and debilitating inertia created from labels and the groupthink that comes with it. That said, as so-called black people, new Africans, when we decide that the galvanizing glue that comes from agreeing on objective reality clearly is no longer needed to move forward, regardless of religious, political, or any other belief, then we are in everlasting trouble as a people. We can't buy, wish, pray, or deny reality away. The reality of our present state of affairs, though sobering, is the only true data to operate from, and when we accept it for what it is, that is when we can hold reality in our hands and reshape, refashion, and repurpose it to create a better world for us as so-called black people, and ultimately, the world.
Mr. Kenny Anderson?
Good evening, and the struggle for black democratic human rights continues. The topic of my address this evening is white fragility over the facts of racism. Recently, I was involved in a survey that had racial connotations, dealing with how blacks living in majority-black cities have to pay more for food, energy bills, home and auto insurance than whites living in majority-white suburbs. A white female participant said, "The racial cost disparities are a fact, but most whites feel uncomfortable being totally honest talking about racism in America." I asked, "Why are whites uncomfortable talking about race? Have whites been enslaved in America, systematically oppressed and exploited, denied civil rights and voting rights, racially traumatized and told they were inferior?" She said, "No, it just makes whites very uncomfortable just talking about racism." White author Robin D'Angelo says, "This sense of being uncomfortable is white fragility. Though blacks suffer from white supremacy, white sense of delicateness, sensibility, and specialness takes precedence. White feeling responses are more important than the vocal and written facts about systemic racism. In part, whites' current drive against critical race theory is being driven by white fragility." Indeed, white fragility is tired of racism being criticized, tired of hearing about racism and Black Lives Matter. As Malcolm X said, "That whites don't want you to stop suffering from racism, they just simply want you to suffer quietly." According to white fragility, as a black man, when I speak during public comments, I should not make white Mayor Tim Grimal uncomfortable, I should not make city councilmen Mike McGinnis and Brett Nicholson uncomfortable, I should not make the white audience here uncomfortable. Let me make this point clear this evening, the last Tuesday of Black History Month, if any white person believes their feelings, white fragility is more important than black people suffering, more important than me telling it like it is, my public comments about racism, than I say to those white persons, "You must either be a racist, on drugs, or insane." In closing, Malcolm X once said that, "Not speaking what's real about race relations in order to be sensitive to white people is a betrayal to your own people." Furthermore, he says, "To cater to the feelings of those that obviously don't give a damn about you clearly proves that your mind is mentally enslaved." The struggle continues.
Robert Bass?
First, I want to thank Mayor Grimal for his actions on, on the budget amendment in the last meeting. By your actions, you brought back business practices to the city government. Thank you. There was a shooting in District 1 last Saturday night, and that's what I briefly wanted to touch on. We, the citizens district council, would like to give our condolences to the family that has lost a loved one on the South Side last, last Saturday at Franklin Road and Luther Street. We also want to send out our prayers to all of the families connected to this tragic occurrence. We want to be clear, and we want to, we want a clean city, we want a safe and prosperous district and city. We cannot achieve these endeavors through unnecessary gun violence and death. We cannot achieve these endeavors through unnecessary gun violence and death. There are about five party stores and a gas station in District One residential area. That's the South End, not the West Side. If there is anyone that thinks that this will be District One's new normal, unnecessary violence in our streets and our businesses, please think again. We will respond. The citizen district council is made up of citizens. That's why it says citizen district council. That's all over the district, not just in one particular area, but we moved across borderlines so we deal with more than just District One. So when I make a statement, please remember that I mean all districts. I can't speak for all districts, but I can make mention of all districts because we collaborate together. We've had a number of incidents that has happened in District One. When you talk about downtown, some of us compartmentalize downtown, and the residence as two different areas, but all in District One. So I didn't come up with the information that I did this evening about the other suicide and the other killing until this evening. So everything that I've mentioned, our prayers, and best wishes for those families go out to them as well. But I still remain clear, when I say we will respond, we will take every legal action to make sure that those stores do what they're supposed to do to keep from having killings. I'm sorry, my time is up. Have a good day.
Kathy McNally? And up next is going to be Marcus Bowman. I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and TV viewers. Congratulations on your recent election. I'm Kathy McNally, a member of the GURS pension system, a hospital retiree, and president of the Pontiac General Hospital Retiree Group. I respectfully request to have five minutes to speak instead of the normal three. At this point, I would like to have a show of hands of anybody who is a city or hospital retiree on the GURS pension system. Okay? As you know, the emergency manager eliminated paid health care for city retirees. City retirees formed a group called CIPRIA and sued the city to regain paid health care. The emergency manager implemented a $400 a month stipend to all members, city and hospital of the GURS pension system. The settlement through the federal court approved the change to the GURS pension system with funding over 130% to be transferred to a new VIBA account to pay for city retiree health care. I have a copy of the Oakland Press dated December 28, 2012, where Mayor Jukowski is quoted as staying. While some have noted that the general employees' retirement system is approximately 150% funded as proof that it has been better managed than the police and fire retirement system, that overfunding is the result of combining the former Pontiac General Hospital system, which was almost 273% funded, with the city and Silverdome retirement systems, which were approximately 127% funded in 2003. Hospital employees did pay 5% after tax of our wages from the date of hire until the hospital went private after profit in December of 1993. The hospital contributed significantly more over that time. Hospital and total system funds were separately accounted for until 2004, when they were combined. I've sat in on three Zoom meetings with Mayor Waterman when she identified that she had recommended a perpetual increase of $400 a month to all GURS retirees when health care was reinstated for city retirees. Forty percent of the GURS retirees are hospital retirees, and there are many city retirees who are not eligible for health care benefits. Many of these retirees have built the $400 into their monthly budgets. Actuary reports have supported the extension of a perpetual increase only if the additional funds are held back before the transfer out of, from the pension system to the VIBA system. This would leave the VIBA at 143% funding. At the December 7, 2021 meeting, Deborah Munson, executive director of the GURS office, presented information that said if the GURS system is allowed to keep 130% funding, including the 400 perpetual increase, there would be a transfer of approximately $99,280,577 to the VIBA fund, which would make the VIBA fund approximately 143% funded when combined with police and fire. However, the GURS system is allowed to keep 130% funding without the perpetual increase, the transfer would be approximately $163,944,625, which would make the VIBA fund approximately 208% funded.
That does conclude your time. I understand that you requested additional time, and I know that you are speaking for many others with you, but I must fairly administer the council rules, which does spell out three minutes.
No problem. I will email my entire thing to all of you then. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Marcus Bowman, and up next is Shayla Ray.
Point of order.
Don't do that. Okay.
Just for the community's benefit, I believe Mr. Bowman was called next, but this is a city council meeting where we work very hard to allow public opportunity and feedback, and there are people that attend each week's meeting, and we are very consistent that three minutes is the limit. That is the rules that we've adopted for the year to provide for the efficient facilitation of the meeting for the people, and that is the rules that I must administer. And if there was a request for a special presentation, of which there were two tonight, that could have given additional time, but when it comes to public comment, that is what this body voted on unanimously, and thank you very much for your out-of-order feedback yet again.
Good evening, council, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, everybody in attendance, and everybody watching at home. Set this up just a little bit. All right. I'll be real brief. I'm here just to make an announcement about a community event that I'm putting on on Thursday, February 24 regarding an educational conference on classical education and how it's very, very useful and how it works great in urban communities, as well as a power presentation point on how it helps our inner-city kids. We will have free food. This is a free event, so I'm asking everybody in attendance, all are invited. The event starts at 6 o'clock on Thursday night, and it's going to go till about 8 o'clock, so please come. Everyone is welcome. We hope that you get some insightful information, and we hope that you come out and support what we're trying to do, because this is something that we want to bring to the public's attention on how useful classical education can be in our urban, inner-city communities. And then, to a second note, I'd like to say that the public has spoken, and they're going to continue to speak about moving public comments to the front. We do understand that is a respect thing, that you guys have to run your system the way you want to run it, but a lot of the individuals here are seniors, a lot of individuals here have to work, a lot of individuals here like to be at home with their families. So in order to do that, we would like to have public comments moved to the front. So when you guys are handling business, we still can support and we still can watch, but we can watch from home after we get our agenda across. So with that being said, if anybody wants to attend the event, please contact me at Again, that's 248-843-3172. And this is not for RSVP thing, this is so we can get a head count when it comes to food, because we will be providing food. Thank you, and you all have a great night. It is at United Mortgage Wholesale Sports Complex on South Boulevard. I didn't forget. On South Boulevard, and again, it's Thursday night from 6 to 8, Thursday the 24th of this week, 6 to 8. Please be there. Anybody have any questions, concerns, or want to know any additional information, feel free to call me at 248-843-3172. Have a great Monday.
Before you walk away, Marcus, is it at the sports complex or at United Wholesale?
It's at the sports.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Share the answer for the question. Yeah, so if no one heard him, to clarify, the event will be held at the United Wholesale Mortgage Sports Complex, which is the now-former Ultimate Soccer Arena, and not at Wholesale Mortgage, the original.
The next person we have is Shayla Ray, and Pastor Kathy, you'll be up next.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say congratulations to all of you that were elected back in November. I'm going to make this short. The question that I have, I thank God for what you have demonstrated and what you have displayed downstairs for Black History. I wish that you would carry it on, okay? To have Black History in the shortest month, 28 days and 29, if it's leap year, I find it's a travesty. And not only that, in February, we have to have, we deal with Valentine's Day and also Independence Day. So that takes away from the Black History emphasis. So I'm hoping, and I'm suggesting, and some of you may not like it, but I'm suggesting that it would be carried over, because even if we had 52 weeks to talk about some of the people in this city before many of you were born or even lived here, because I've been here since 1943, so I've seen a lot, okay? And when they talk about the fact what Stuart talked about last week, old timers, I'm a old timer, I can remember when they had urban renewal, which I called Negro Removal, okay? That's what I call it. Now we have gentification that's coming. And for me, as a proud Afro-American Negro woman, I have to speak truth to power. Many may not like it, but that's the way it is. So I'm asking the council, if they would continue to allow Black History moments all the rest of this year, because if you don't know it, the reason why you can drive hydromatics now or not driving stick shifts, because the Watkins that had a garage over on Bagley Street were the ones who discovered it. There are many people in this city that has caused the world to improve, and I think they need to be recognized. One of them was my sister, and I thank you, Councilman President McKenna, for mentioning her name, Demetra Leonard, who was an entrepreneur in this city since 1957. And part of her leadership is still going on, even though she passed away on November 18th last year. And so one council meeting, I would like for her to be recognized, and I can give you some information if you wish, but I want to take this opportunity to ask the council to please continue the Black History moments. Thank you.
It's Pastor Kathy, and then Rolando Ybarra. Ybarra, excuse me.
I didn't get up out of turn, I simply couldn't sit there anymore, my leg was asleep. I've got a couple of bullet points, but then some things that people have asked me to bring to the council, not necessarily what I want to bring, but what I'm tired of being asked about, so I said I would. Bullet points, I'm really sad about Auburn Hills opting out of SMART, but the mayor brought some relatively good news. It isn't going to happen anytime soon. I already spoke about the mess at the Phoenix Center. I spoke about the pothole, got rid of a lot of stuff. I'd like to know where we are on the bidding for the forensic audit, because I think that's really important at this point. And then there are two points. I've been asked, 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 and re-asked, and I don't want to bring this, but I promised I would. When you're looking into money misspent, Duane Lyons. Who paid for Duane? He worked for the mayor. Did he ever work for the city? Those are the questions I was asked. And the other issue, after last week's meeting, and the stones that were thrown at our financial director, and the stones that are repetitively thrown at Garland, our clerk, is there anyone here who's ever held a job that didn't do what their boss told them to do if you want your paycheck? It really comes down to that, and all the slings and arrows that keep being thrown don't help the issue at all. All they do is keep it stirred. We all know what's happened, but to throw certain people under the bus because they did their job is cruel. If they did something wrong, it will come out in the audit. If they did not, all the name-calling and finger-pointing in the world won't make it any better. We live in a time full of hate, and we need to stop. It's the worst racism. I'm an old woman, and I've seen a lot of racism in my day, but I've never seen anything like we have today. Black hate black, Chinese hate Chinese, white hate everybody. It's terrible. And then, I'm sorry, but I'm a pastor. In the Book of Genesis, we were all created one in the image and likeness of God, and what changed? Sin and hate. Good night.
Don Nelson? It was you. Oh, okay.
Que onda, buenas noches, mi gente. Me llamo Rolando Ybarra, y yo soy un maestro para la organización de música en Pontiac. Quiero invitarlos a todos a nuestro concierto el 16 de marzo en la Crowfoot a las cinco y media en la noche. No translators here? Maybe that can be something that's talked about in our robust broadcast thing that we're talking about here. Would have liked to have heard that talked about. Hello, my name is Rolando Ybarra. I'm here to introduce myself as a percussion teacher and also community engagement coordinator for Accent Pontiac, and invite you all to our student showcase Wednesday, March 16, at the Crowfoot right here in Pontiac, starting at 5:30 PM, where our youth will be playing songs that they learned, but also showcasing songs that they wrote themselves. If you've never heard of Accent Pontiac, we are a social change through music program that has an after-school program at Pontiac Middle School that is also available to Whitman and Elkhart Elementary students. We also teach in-school at Whitman and Elkhart. I started teaching at Whitman in the sixth week of school, so you can imagine my surprise at the excitement of one of my Spanish-speaking students who told me in Spanish, "You're the first adult I've been able to speak to." I thought she must have just been exaggerating because she was excited, but when the next class came in and the teachers, excuse me, and the teacher started instructing a seven-year-old to translate for the rest of the students, I knew that there was an issue. Now, I know that this is a school board problem, but the fact of the matter is, when I came to see, when I came to the city council debates, I was deeply disheartened that only one person the whole night directly addressed spoke about or mentioned our Spanish or Arabic-speaking communities. I'm asking you all to please be better than those who sat in the seats before you. There aren't translators available at this meeting, the signup sheets and the signage is not in Spanish, a lot of the flyers and stuff that y'all are doing for your community meetings and stuff are not posted in Spanish at all or anything. You know, if we're talking about, let me just get back to what I got to say here. I know a lot of y'all at those debates talked about wanting to make Pontiac a destination for people, but don't forget that there are a lot of people from all over the world who have already chosen Pontiac to be their home. If you want to hear from your citizens, ellos también quieren saber de ti. They want to hear from you too. Thank you.
And Kim, I'm sorry, sir?
There's two bars on there.
Okay. I apologize.
That's all right.
The next one is going to be Don Nelson. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone, mayor, honorable counsel. Just want to address two things. Number one was retiree health care, has already been mentioned here tonight, but I want to bring something to your attention. Not all retirees have received it. Immediately in February, the $400 stopped, but immediately in February, the insurance did not come. I just worked with a retiree on Saturday, online, getting him registered, only to find out, he's not in the system. Now, some of you may say, "Well, that's the previous administration. You had that right until you were elected. Now it's yours." Now it's yours. So I'm gonna ask you, what are you gonna do better? There is a meeting Thursday, the 24th, for the retirees. Do you know how many days are in this month, as has already been mentioned? It's 28. 24 days before any retiree who does not have access to online or digital media can get any resolution. And that's not the previous administration. Buck stops here with you. You had the right to say that was the previous administration until you were elected. You have inherited this mess. Now it's yours. The next thing I want to talk about is, how many of you guys are old enough to remember the CETA program? Huh? The CETA program. The CETA program was a program that would help young people get jobs in apprenticeship within the City of Pontiac and the school board. There are many people here today that have really started with that program, myself included. But I want to ask you, what are you doing as a City of Pontiac leadership to bring apprenticeship back into the city? There are many people that are retiring, and there's nobody capable to take their position. There are many people that are retiring, doing jobs that require experience, and there's nobody there to fill it. What are you gonna do as the leadership of this city to fill in that void? See, because the schools won't give it if there's no need for it. You can say, oh, that's a school board thing. Well, if you don't provide a need for it, it's not gonna be there. Our children and our youth in Pontiac deserve better. And now, it's in your hands. Thank you.
Don Nelson, and next is Kim Diopoulos.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you. I've never been at such a professional city council meeting. I wasn't gonna come tonight.
Sir, I actually want to interject, so you could move the lever up.
Oh, okay.
Or hold it, whatever's more comfortable, so that way those here and at home can hear you. I haven't started your clock yet. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I wasn't gonna come tonight, and I'm thankful I did. I have never been at a more professional city council meeting anywhere. And some of the things you've done, I even have taken notes, and one of the things was, when you honored Ms. Portia, the look in your eyes, Ms. Portia, is very unifying and very inviting, and it says well for you and the community you live in. Thank you. When I want to, I want to talk about the stipend for Pontiac General. I started there in 1984, and I wanted to speak for my family, because we are a family. And those of you that remember James Wright, the president of the hospital at that time, I had the honor and privilege of seeing him come down the back stairwell by security about a week before his plane went down. And he had a different smile on his face and a lightness about him, and thank God he had made a life-changing decision. So in saying that, back to the $400 stipend, as much as it may seem like not much money, honestly, it can handle all the monthly bills, and maybe food also, if we're frugal. And so $400 may not seem like a lot, but to a lot of us, it is. And please, if you think about it, please reconsider, and I'm very thankful I came tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Diopoulos.
I'm gonna give my time to Kathy McNally, so she can finish. Go ahead, Kathy.
Without objection, I'll give counsel, yep. Our council rules don't, I don't have it in front of me. Is there any objection for this one?
I don't have any objections today.
Okay. With that, the time has been deferred to you.
Thank you.
And I'll bone up for future meetings to make sure I'm doing it right.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so continuing on the information that Deborah Monson provided at the December 7th meeting. If the GURS system is allowed to keep only 130% funding without the perpetual 400 increase, the transfer would be approximately $163,944,625, which would make the VIBA fund approximately 208% funded. This is completely opposite what most municipalities prefer. CIPRIA has collected dues of $100 per year from their members to pay for legal expenses. It is my understanding that the judge's ruling on the settlement awarded all legal expenses to be paid by the city. It is also my understanding that five of the nine members of the CIPRIA board have voted for the transfer of funds from the GURS system without allowing the additional approximate $65 million to cover the perpetual increase. I believe not all CIPRIA members are aware of the board's decision, based on the number of calls that have gone to the pension office after last week's pension check. Ultimately, when all retirees and beneficiaries of the GURS and VIBA systems have died, the funds in both accounts will be transferred to the city. I understand that city council cannot vote on making the transfer stay. However, my question would be, why those CIPRIA officers need to have the VIBA funded at 208% instead of 143%? Do the CIPRIA officers who are blocking GURS from keeping the additional funds to cover the perpetual increase think that they will get a bonus or extra benefits? There is no logical reason for the VIBA to be so overfunded. Perhaps the CIPRIA board may want to add their funds to the VIBA to assist with the overfunding they're seeking. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. John Talbert.
He did the invocation. He's departed.
Laura Kenny. And after that would be Linda Watson.
My lady, Ms. Laura Kenny, I'm a nurse retired from Pontiac General after 40 years of service. I was here in December to speak, but this is a new council here, and my time ran out. What I didn't get to tell you is, the reason why I came to work at the hospital and I stayed is because of such teamwork with all the people in the hospital and the family spirit. Not with just the doctors and the nurses, but with all the other people, okay? We're talking about the people that work in the laundry, housekeeping, everybody. Everybody worked as a team to get the patients taken care of. That's why I never left. I never went anyplace else. I'm told that some of the people's pensions are as low as $200 to $400 a month, okay? Add that with the average Social Security, might be $1,300 a month. Some people are living, okay, and we're all seniors. I look in this room, I worked with most of these people, there's not one of the people that I see under 70, okay? So this $400 we're thinking, we're talking about, that we're asking you for, it's gonna be real short-lived, people. The average life expectancy for any of us is 75 years. That's according to the actuaries, okay? We're asking for measly $400. That's on top of the $1,700 we all have to live on, okay? $1,700 to buy your medicine, your own health insurance, if you want. If you want Plan G, that's an extra $200 a month, plus what, Social Security charges, Medicare, plus buy your drugs, okay? Plus pay your groceries for your groceries. If you don't have bus system, ask this gentleman up here. He didn't have bus system. You don't have a bus system, try to keep up car and car insurance. Pay your house taxes, okay? I'm a little lucky. I have a little extra money, okay? People can't live, and we're the seniors that dedicated our life taking care of the people in the City of Pontiac all our life, okay? Consider us. Consider us if you have a chance to vote on the $400. We gave our life here. We gave our life, okay? Just consider us, so we can buy our medication and pay for our health insurance and pay our taxes. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Linda Watson, and then Portia Fields Anderson.
Thank you, and I'm a retiree also. Kathy McNally and Billy Swizer, we're the most active concerning the retirees. Part of what Kathy provided is true. Where we differ is, we're not against the $400. The problem is, which fund is it going to come out of? That's the only question that is holding everything up. Now, I want to correct, Billy, at the meeting last week, you put out the number 4,000. It's 400 that we're talking about. Now, the other thing is, most of the retirees do not know who's doing what. GURS is the general employees retirement system and processes your pension checks, not the city. CIPRIA is the City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association, which filed the lawsuit in 2012 against this city as a result of the emergency manager eliminating the negotiated and promised lifetime health care and life insurance. CIPRIA was formed by the GURS police and fire retired employees who had 10 years of service at the appropriate age. The hospital employees were not included because their unions had negotiated the elimination of health care for wage increases. The hospital retirees were also giving back any contributions they personally paid when the hospital was privatized. We all want the money. Just determine which fund it's gonna come out of. Now, I'm upset and on the other side of Billy and Kathy, only because of where this money is supposed to come from. That's the only issue for me. But my other problem is the manner in which GURS went about trying to intervene in the court settlement.
Portia Fields Anderson, and then Carol Ikanowski. Kynowski, thank you so much.
Good one. Thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, councilpersons. Thank you so much for having such a drama-free meeting. I want to say just a couple of things. One, we have a mayor, that's the people's mayor. On Saturday, this little girl walked up to him and said, "Will you go down the hill with me?" In his dress coat, he flopped down on that sled and went down the sledding hill, not once, not twice, but three times. Yes. We gave him a reason to do what we must always do, keep the child within our hearts. President, thank you so much for giving me my very first dance since I've been going through my health challenge, which is getting better. If you didn't know, he can hustle. As we closed this month of celebration, I have a different view on Black History Month. For me, Black History is every day. Last time I looked in the mirror, I was black. It's every day, but it's not only every day for Black History. It's our Spanish sisters and brothers, our Arab-American sisters and brothers. It's all of that. But every now and then, we have to have a time. It's like you were born. You have a birthday. You have a day that you can celebrate you. I celebrate you because you are all the shoulders upon which I have stood from age seven and up, okay? The Friends of Murphy Park wanted to do special, do something special for Black History Month. And so, my heart said, they need to do something super, super special. And I said, okay, I'm gonna eat peanut butter and jelly for the next four weeks, but we're taking some Murphy Park kids to see The Lion King. And it was just so wonderful, because I truly believe that children who are poor deserve the best. I want you to know, I called up Chuck, and I said, Chuck, I'm gonna be eating, Chuck Johnson's gonna be eating peanut butter and jelly for the next three or four weeks. Can you help? Now, you know he did, and told me not ever make a decision for him whether to ask or not, because he had the will to say yes or no. That was his decision. Chuck Mitchell, Leona Patterson, Kano Phillips came through for these kids to see a production that is absolutely amazing. Needless to say, my friend Garth Fagan from Wayne State University Dance is the choreographer. But Chuck, you are just simply a wonderful asset to this city, and thank you so much for being here. And thank you, everyone, for listening.
Thank you.
Ms. Carol, and last would be Larry Jasper.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, my name is Carol Jakowski. I am a Pontiac General Hospital retiree. The city employees' pension funds and the hospital employees' pension funds are commingled. Because the funds are commingled, when one group takes money out, in all fairness, the other group should also be able to take money out to be given the same amount. I am asking you to make the $400 stipend to the hospital employees' pension permanent, in all fairness. With thanks for everything that you do. Thanks.
President, that concludes our...
Can I, can I give, you want to talk more?
I think we're all good on that front.
Yes, we're good.
Thank you, Ms. Jakowski.
Oh, Ms. Larry Jasper.
How you doing, guys? I just want to say, city council's been doing a great job, and I'm watching, guys having to come, but paying attention closely. Mayor Graham's done a hell of a job. Can you hear me okay?
Just a little louder, yeah.
How's that? Better?
Perfect.
All right, great. At least I can talk. Usually the mic doesn't work when I talk. I don't know why. Anyways, so I congratulated you, but the idea here is you're doing a forensic audit, and I wanted to make sure you had a few facts in front of you, because I know you're fairly new to the process. You need to look at the July financials, 2019 to 2020, $7 million disappeared. Nobody knows where it went. On the promissory note, it was done on the global settlement agreement. There's $1.7 million was added to it. There was a year of payments not made this year specifically, which you probably don't know, but if there was payments made for that promissory note, you need to know where they went, because this didn't go towards the promissory note. It's supposed to balloon after seven years. Also, the ex-mayor had a legal loophole. She signed a confidentiality agreement based on the settlement agreement, which they dismissed, meaning that $6.5 million of Oakland County was supposed to do repairs on the Phoenix Center didn't occur, and special deals went down behind closed doors because she had the confidentiality. The only way to get that information is to have them go to court. The states that write in contract, I'm gonna email you a copy of these documents, so you'll have that on hand, but I wanted you to make aware of that. so that you'll have that on hand, but I wanted you to make aware of that. So that global settlement agreement, where's the uh, has anybody here seen the private pub- private-public partnership? Because I don't know about you, but every attorney I've ever met has said, read anything before you sign it, however resolutions were given, that allows, doesn't allow you to change it unless you have someone like me who was torturably interfered with my project, Little Cities. Go to littlecities.net, you'll see that all the things you've been talking about here, we have a reparation process. We have a educational platform for hiring jobs to high income. All kinds of different stuff, but you need to take it. I don't have enough time to go over that. That being said, um, you need to see the private-public partnership. And right now, most of the citizens of Pontiac love the TP there. They had beautiful concerts in different times on the Phoenix Center. That was part of the parking lease agreement. The city has insured that. It shouldn't be no more than filing an insurance claim and having it fixed. Should be done. That simple. But it's been sitting there for months and nobody's done anything. So obviously, nobody's read the parking lease agreement that was signed by the prior council. And then you have to look at all the different resolutions on that. Now, Tim and I, we're going to talk about it. But if you're going to do the forensic audit, you need to look at all those different numbers. And right there, I see that deal could be overturned. And by the way, who is your partner in the private-public partnership? Because it isn't Juan or Locke, they're stickmen. And if you look at the resolution, you understand why. It brings in all kinds of.
That concludes your time, sir.
Thank you very much.
So that concludes uh, excuse me, any comment, public comment?
All right, we're now at closing comments with mayor, clerk, and council. Mayor Grimald, you have the floor.
Well, good evening, everyone. I want to begin by thanking all of the retirees for coming out tonight. You've been incredibly patient, waiting through the entirety of the meeting. I want to particularly thank those who spoke, but I want to thank everybody who came out, regardless of whether you spoke or not. And I especially want to thank you, Ms. McAnally. I hope I'm saying that correctly. You did a great job laying out all of the facts in great detail. Well, and I would welcome that opportunity. So I'd love to get together with you and do a deeper dive on things. But you did a great job in terms of really distilling all of the issues to their essence. And the $400 cannot legally come out of the VIBA. It can only come out legally of the GURS fund, as you alluded to. And so, it's really essential that if that $400 monthly payment is going to continue, that there be enough money left in the GURS fund to fund that amount. And as you noted, under the settlement agreement, if the 130% overfunding left in the GURS does not include the $400 per month liability, there will simply not be enough money left in the GURS to fund that $400 monthly amount in perpetuity. And you laid all those facts out very, very well and very accurately. And as a result, it's important that that settlement agreement be modified to allow for enough money to be left behind in the GURS to fund that $400 monthly amount. The settlement agreement that's in place was agreed to about three years ago, a little over three years ago, by the previous mayor and by CIPRIA. I have reached out to CIPRIA and talked with CIPRIA about our interest as the city in modifying that settlement agreement to allow for more funds to be left in the GURS fund, to allow for the possibility of funding the $400 monthly payment. CIPRIA, to date, has not been willing to modify the settlement agreement in that way. And because it's a settlement agreement between two parties, the city alone cannot modify it. It requires CIPRIA to agree to modify it, to allow more funds to remain in the GURS fund. So I encourage all of you to reach out to CIPRIA and urge them to be open-minded because that's the only way that enough money will be left in the GURS to even potentially fund this $400 monthly stipend amount. And thank you again, Ms. McAnally, for your great job summarizing all of those facts. I really appreciate it. In terms of the, in terms of the forensic audit and where that stands, we're hoping to have a recommendation in time for next Tuesday's council meeting in terms of a recommendation for a selection of an audit firm. If not in time for next Tuesday's meeting, we will have that recommendation in time for the following Tuesday council meeting for a final decision on a selection of that forensic audit firm. I also want to note, and I mentioned this a week ago as well, that we have a couple of town halls coming up regarding how best to spend some funds, some grant dollars that we receive for making improvements to the senior centers. This Friday will be a town hall at the Ruth Peterson Center from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. The following Monday, on February 28th, there'll be a town hall forum at the Bowen Center, also from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. along the same line. So if you're interested in providing input about how best to spend those grant dollars to improve the facilities, please, please attend one of those town hall forums that are coming up. The Phoenix Center accident, I'll call it, where that destroyed the canopy occurred a little over two months ago now. There was insurance in place on it. The city did have insurance in place. We have exercised emergency provisions to try to expedite the selection of a contractor so that we don't have to go through the full RFP process. We did solicit a few bids to try to get some degree of reasonable price, but it's not cheap to get down the remaining tatters. However, we have selected a contractor to do that. That was done last week. And we anticipate that those remaining tatters will be brought down within the next two weeks. And I recognize that that's long overdue and we want to make sure that we're cleaning that up. A couple other quick notes, if I can. Mr. President, we are aware that streetlights on Gulf Drive are out. Three or four poles were knocked down, and those have been put back up. And they're making the final repairs to those to reinstate those streetlights so that those are back up and operating soon. We have informed, I informed two of the members of the Medical Marijuana Commission that was appointed by the previous mayor that we're going to appoint two replacements for them. One of those is the mayor herself, who appointed herself last year to the Medical Marijuana Commission. There's some question as to whether that's been allowed under the city charter. The other individual who was appointed is a city employee. And as I mentioned earlier, we're trying to avoid having city employees on boards and commissions. I've invited the other two medical marijuana commissioners to reapply as we evaluate the appointees to that commission. We've received an application from one of them. We anticipate receiving an application from the other one this week. And then we'll make sure that we make final decisions on the four appointees moving forward so that we can finally bring a conclusion to that medical marijuana process and finish off the appeals process so that we can finally bring some resolution to that longstanding process that's been dragging on now for three and a half years or so. So we're finally seeing some light at the end of the tunnel. We'll make those final decisions this week, finally. And then lastly, public safety is an urgent, urgent concern and crisis in our city. I know that we heard concerns expressed during public comment this evening. Gun violence in particular is an epidemic in our community. We take this very seriously. We've already had far too many murders this calendar year, just in the past less than two months now. We're forming a task force to try to look at preventing violence from occurring in the first place. In the vast majority of these incidents, this violence is occurring between people who know one another. They're either friends or family members or other acquaintances. And we've got to do more to deescalate conflict before it spirals out of control and becomes violent. Thank you so much again for all of your concerns, for all of your input, and for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Grimald. We are now at. Clerk Doyle, any closing comments?
No comments, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, district floor.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to try it again. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you so much. A problem is a chance for us to do our best. That was said by the late, great Duke Ellerton. We are aware of the challenges we face as a community. And what has to happen is that we continue the dialogue, even the ones that make us feel uncomfortable. Last weekend in my district, we lost another person from the South Side. It affects us all because this was a man who was a father. This was a man who worked hard for his family and his life was taken away by senseless violence. I can say that there has been somebody who has been arrested. And I have to give kudos to the Oakland County sheriffs for being so diligent at making this happen quickly. But that's not enough for me. I've been in talks with the mayor, as he said earlier, about trying to make sure that we have the right type of temperament and, excuse me, the right type of organizations and temperament so that we can try to direct this energy into another way. Because if we don't, it's not going to just be three in February. It's going to be 30. And we as a citizens, we as citizens in the city of Pontiac must be held to a higher standard and try to defuse situations. We can and we will make a difference. I also wanted to do, to say the Pontiac Rotary Club has 100 Trees, 100 Years Celebration, which is April the 17th to the 23rd. You can sign up or find out the information from Mr. Rick David Michigan at, Rick David. His phone number is 248-766-4817. His email is rickdavidmichigan@gmail.com. I also want to mention that the first, finally, Coffee and Conversations for District One will be held March the 12th. That will be at the Alley Cat. I'm looking for speakers. I'm looking for anybody who wants to be involved in that process so that we can make it a total community event. Lastly, I also want to talk about April the 26th at the Bowen Center. I want to make sure I read this correctly. One moment, please. Thank you. The event is going to be the Secretary of State coming to the Bowen Center on April the 26th. For more appointments or information, you can call Deborah Finley. Her phone number is 248-758-3238. And lastly, let's pray for our community. Let's pray for those who lost their lives. Let's pay for those who are sick and shunned because prayer truly can and always does change things. I say good night.
Thank you. Councilman Brett Nicholson, District Two, your closing comments.
Thank you, and thank you to the mayor and administration for another week of transparency and responsiveness. I will start my comment every week that that continues. It's just really nice to work as a team. It's been great. District Two Advisory Group has our next month, has our monthly meeting. It's this coming Monday at the Goldner Walsh Nursery on Orchard Lake Road. That is the fourth Monday of every month at 7:00 p.m. We also have, as I mentioned before, I have my coffee hour coming up this Thursday, the 24th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. With special guest treasurer, county treasurer Robert Wittenberg and his team to help relay any information regarding foreclosure prevention and any other services that the treasurer's office does offer. Also, a member from the assessor's office will be there to answer questions regarding how they can better support in those circumstances as well. Again, P&amp;Q's Bakery on Telegraph Elizabeth Lake Road in the plaza there. There is only six more days to, if you are a District Two resident, to tell me about your ideas for community projects. So I have the actual physical form here. If you have ideas, you want to tell us about what our community project should be for 2022. It's also on my council page. There is a link there on Nextdoor and on Facebook. So anywhere you are here, if you need a physical copy, I have those as well. Once that wraps up, then from the first through the 15th, we are meeting, there's a group, a committee of us that you can also join as checking that box on this form to go through the feasibility and the costs of all of our ideas, come up with the best way that we can spend those dollars so we can get as many of those projects rolling as possible. We want to get them done as soon as possible, but a lot of it, of course, will be weather-dependent. Also, for Earth Day, we have our countywide, or I'm sorry, our citywide effort to ensure that, especially in District Two, that every single street is adopted. So I have the physical signup with me tonight, as always. But again, on my council page, Nextdoor and on Facebook, you can sign up to adopt a street. If you don't live in District Two, but you just want to do some cleaning, you're welcome to join us. But thank you. That's all I have for this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. One last thing. Thank you to the mayor's administration for involving me as the chair of the Finance and Personnel Committee to be part of that audit selection process. So we do have a meeting set for Thursday. So very hopeful that we'll be able to make that decision and bring it before council by Tuesday.
Thank you. The Birthday Man, the Honorable Mikhail Goodman, District Three.
Good evening, everyone. I kind of got to cheat a little bit earlier because SMART was my passion project for the past few weeks. Being able to give that update earlier was really helpful. And for that reason, I'll try to keep it as short as I can. Directly going to some of the comments that happened during public comment. I personally, in my district, am doing everything that I can. I should be, honestly, should be doing more to overcome some of the language barriers and cultural barriers in the city of Pontiac, especially as a place to my personal district because District Three is split evenly in thirds between our black residents, our white residents, and our Hispanic residents. And for that reason, those are the same doors that I knocked. And I feel that it's extremely important that I and the city as a whole should be doing more to reach those residents because they are residents here too. So I think that's the thing that, as a city, we should prioritize. But personally, I am searching, and someone have already found an intern from Aleph's beginning in the summer that will personally help me in District Three communicate with my Spanish-speaking residents, which is actually a student from the city of Pontiac. So that is a goal that I'm going towards. I think that's also very important. From one of the other bars, I brought it up about skilled trades and apprenticeships and, you know, training our upcoming generations. And I think it's an extremely important thing that not only the city should do, but obviously, the city working with the school board to do so. As a student who unfortunately didn't get a chance to actually attend the Pontiac school system, but benefited from one living in Pontiac, going to a school with Pontiac residents in the city. But I was able to attend OTAC right up the street on Perry. That is a reason why I'm able to speak about having a certification experience before I hit college. And I think it's an extremely important thing that we should be doing moving forward, no matter the industry. And outside of that, for District Three, our first district meeting will be this Thursday, February 24th, from 5:00 to 6:00 on Zoom. And so that link is available on my council Facebook, no, on my council page. So if you go to the city website and go to my individual council page, there is the link for that Zoom for tomorrow, not tomorrow, Thursday from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And in addition to that, there is also a similar form that, similar to what Councilman Nicholson has in terms of district projects. So anyone from my district who also would like to fill that out, that is available both on my council Facebook page as well as the council, my council webpage on the city website. But with that, that is all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kathalye James, District Four, your closing comment.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to greet all of the members that are here from the various unions. Appreciate all your comments. We appreciate very deeply your concerns, and our hearts are with you. We can't solve the problem for you, but our hearts are with you. Also, for District Four, there was a boil water advisory that was given this week for residents who live in the, on Ballwin, near where the Save-A-Lot store is. And that boil water notice has been removed. So those of you who are still boiling your water in those areas, you can, you can stop that, that notice has been, advisory has been removed. Also, the District Four Community Council meeting will be on Thursday night at 6:00 p.m. It's going to be a Zoom meeting. If you live in District Four and you'd like to attend, please email me, text me, or call me at 248-425-4663. Or you can email me at the city's address, kjames@poniac MI.us. Also, the Parks and Recreation and Public Works Meeting, that's the subcommittee that I chair, will meet on this coming Monday, February the 28th at noon. So any, that's an open meetings. So anyone that wants to be able to attend that meeting, you're welcome to attend. Also, oh, it's going to be in the Legislative Council's conference room. Also, spring is coming, and we are planning a, the city of Pontiac in conjunction with the Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership is planning a huge cleanup in the city throughout all of the districts. It's going to run for the whole week of April the 22nd. The 22nd is Earth Day, which is a Thursday. We're actually going to be working that entire week, one day in each of the districts. And we need a lot of people. You know, we need people to volunteer. So if you have a church group, if you have any kind of an organization that would be interested in doing some projects that week. We have 100 trees that the Rotary Club is donating for their 100th anniversary. We're going to be planting those trees that week. We're going to be planting those trees that week. So there are just a ton of things that we're going to try to do to beautify our city. So if you have groups, or as an individual, you want to be involved, please contact your city council representative. Potholes in District Four on Baldwin, horrible. I would like to say they have been repaired, but the last time I checked at 11 o'clock today, they had not been. And Baldwin is our gateway into, from the north side. So, you know, we really, really want to see the potholes corrected on Baldwin, the street. And I have a concern that the potholes that we have throughout the city, and I know in District Four, we've got some serious areas, Columbia and Baldwin, I'm wondering if our capability currently in DPW is really lined up to our need, because we have a huge need with respect to potluck, so, potholes, so more to come.
We're pro-potluck, we are pro-potluck, anti-pothole.
So, more to come. We will continue to work with, with the city, with the executive office and everyone concerned, because there is a lot of concern. I'm getting a lot of calls, people are upset and frustrated, and we definitely, definitely want to get it resolved.
I've heard specifically about Baldwin north of Walton. Is that the area you're talking about in particular?
Yes, yes. DPW has the, they have the areas designated, but, you know, there's just, resources are limited, so.
Mayor and deputy mayor is just sort of a personal privilege, or what's the point? Just without objection, do you want to share with the community how you would like City Hall to be informed about pothole concerns? Anything you want to elaborate on, on that?
For the time being, we're currently looking at setting up a more formalized process for receiving and processing citizen and resident concerns and input, and we'll have more hopefully to announce on that in the coming weeks. But for the time being, I encourage people to call the mayor's office directly. I want to make sure that I'm aware of these concerns and that we're getting those calls directly. We'll obviously refer those to DPW, but I'd love it if you call our office directly. And let me also give you my email address, which might be more convenient for folks than actually putting a phone call into our office. You can email me at mayor, M-A-Y-O-R, at pontiac.mi.us. So mayor@pontiac.mi.us. Thanks.
Thank you. Closing comments, the Honorable William Parker Jr., District Five.
Thank you, brother president. Oh, give thanks unto the Lord, for he is good, and his mercy endureth forever. Good evening, Pontiac. First, I want to give thanks to my colleagues in the city for the cards, prayers, and condolences in the loss of my family member. It was truly appreciated. But as I think about the last Tuesday of February, the last Tuesday of Black History Month, Dr. King said it is always right to do what is right. And in regards to those people who showed up today representing the retirement program, I'm your council representative at the board, I can tell you, it is not us that's holding up your money. We can understand, and I know there's a meeting tomorrow, and I'm sure it'll be discussed again, but you really need to talk with the leadership of the CIPRA board to make sure that they are lined up with trying to do what is right, while is right. And while we're there, I wanted to make sure that while we're talking about Black History, there's somebody that I was hearing about most recently, I don't know if anybody can remember, Attorney Eloise Williams. I hope that we will recognize Councilman Eloise Williams. I believe she was the first black attorney in Pontiac. I believe that was what she was. So that name came into my head, somebody was telling me about her. Eloise, is that her name? Yeah, Eloise Williams, that's how I pronounce it. Well, female.
Female.
Female, thank you. Let me make sure I clarify. First, black female attorney in Pontiac, and I pray that we'll, I'm sure Mike would do his research, because he's the historian that he is. Amen. I just want to say that, and I know as we look down our list and we think about all those things that we said we would do, and I'm glad the council thought about delaying this, because one of the things that we said we would do is we would try to make sure that there was better jobs and better housing available for the Pontiac residents. And so as you can see, we're trying to make sure that those things occur. But as we think about it, you know, there's so much things on the docket as we move forward. There's the Lewis Voting Rights Act, there's the redistricting and gentrification that's going on, there's critical rights, critical race theory and teaching history, because all history is American history, why are we trying to eliminate Black history? You know, there's the attack on civil rights and the civil rights laws, all they're doing is sneakily, is still attacking the basic premise of civil rights. And so as we move forward, it's going to take all of us of one mind, of one place, in one accord, to be able to deal with all of the things that is going on in the world today. And so we want to keep those people who are suffering, you know, when I think about the retirement program, I have family members at their retirement program, I'm afflicted, so I know what you're feeling. And so we all go through some things, and we want to make sure that as we deal with all the things that we deal with, that we remember that we were created equal, and that we all should treat each others as brothers and sisters in Christ. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Mike McGinnis, District Seven's councilperson and the council president. I've shared with you previously that Oakland University in the 1970s did a Pontiac oral history project, and they were focusing on trying to save the stories from those from the Great Migration that moved here from the deep south and were from the Black community. Their stories were being lost as their family members, oh, thank you, I'll shave a few extra seconds off myself. But what they're also trying to do is interview family members of those that have since passed away but were interviewed originally in the 1970s. So I very briefly want to read those names, and then I'll share the email where at Krezge Library at Oakland University, they want to hear from you, so they can basically follow up 50 years later and hear the stories of how your family has continued to evolve and experience Pontiac. Those names are Rebecca Barxdale, these are the folks that were interviewed in the 1970s, Rebecca Barxdale, William Aaron Garland, Wilford Gordon, Thomas Holland, the father of the first African-American mayor, Wallace Holland, Harry Ricks, Adele Walker, Mary Bell Scott, Nellie R. Lena Morton Ryder, the first Black student to graduate from Pontiac High School, Mary Gordon, Willie Dean, Ann Walker, Lillian Richardson, Margaret Dooley, Elizabeth Hunt, Cassius Roberts Sr., Samuel Morgan, Oliver Tademey, T-A-D-E-M-Y, if I'm pronouncing it wrong, Edith Cross, Ima Harris, I-M-A Harris, and Lois Wilson. So if you, if that's a family member akin to you, please contact Daniel@Oakland.edu. That's Dominique Daniel, and so her email is D-A-N-I-E-L@Oakland.edu. So just want to get that out there. Murphy Park in District Seven was the happening place this past weekend. Thank you to the Friends of Murphy Park that made that winter fun possible. I think that's something that we can absolutely grow, and that the community is continuing and want to celebrate gateway-built construction that helped make it possible as well. And as was shared, the Friends of Murphy Park, in addition to Portia Fields Anderson, Chuck Johnson, Kano Phillips, and others, allowed for our Pontiac children to be able to experience the Lion King production at the Detroit Opera House. That's a big deal. So thank you for going above and beyond. I definitely heard Mr. Ebar's feedback in terms of Spanish-speaking translations and other services will work from the city council side to be very proactive with that. And just wanted to conclude that, in addition to the many birthdays that we've been celebrating, we have our own councilman, Mikhail Goodman, who later this week is celebrating his 22nd birthday, which will make him the world's second youngest elected official. But I jest, I jest. But we want to make sure that you know that because you stayed the long haul, you love Pontiac so much that you invested four hours of your very valuable time, that you were awarded with delicious cake made by a Pontiac bakery with this gentleman's face on it. So don't deprive yourself of that experience. And next up, President Pro Tem William A. Carrington also has a birthday in the coming days as well. Thank you so much for all of you who were here tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. It was moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Parker that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Herein no discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle. Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays. Six yays, zero nays, that motion carries. We stand adjourned at 9:58 p.m. We beat 10 o'clock p.m. You're rewarded with cake. God bless you, good night.